One of these. Is that? No, you have yours. I've got the old one, but it's not a big change, is there? No, no, this is.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last City Council meeting of September. This is the September 24th meeting. Let us all stand for a Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, and I have a few things I'd like to read to you before we start. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk has read that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether they're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the agenda item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the City Council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, this is the last meeting of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Would the clerk please call the first item on our agenda, please?
Yes, a couple of announcements first. Due to the City of Lincoln InGenus People's Day, Columbus Day holiday, there will be no City Council meeting on Monday, October 8th. However, city offices will be open. We ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Once you have testified and council does not have any questions of you, you may return to your seat. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Does anyone in the chamber like to speak on this agenda item? Anyone on the council? Seeing no one, can we do the next item?
All right, we just have one item to vote on. It's item 2A. This was introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Raybold and a second by Councilman Camp. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then, we have no public hearing liquor resolutions. We'll go on to our regular public hearing resolutions. Approving floor dimensional doing business as Plum Crazy Lounge as a Keno satellite located at 7301 South 27th Street, suites 150, 160, and 170.
Is there anyone here from Plum Crazy Lounge that would like to... Please come forward. Can I say the name again? That's just fun.
Oh, Plum Crazy Lounge. My name is David Stokke, S.T.O.K.K.E. My address is 1620 Susan Circle, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Welcome, David. Tell us about Plum Crazy Lounge.
Well...
And your license, and your application.
Well, we've been open for a few months now. We opened in very late April, and we've just been getting a lot of requests to bring Keno in, and it was kind of surprising, but we must be big on that part of town, so we do what we could.
Questions from the council for this applicant? Is anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa, that concludes our public hearing resolutions.
Yes, so we can vote on this item. It was introduced by Gayler Baird.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gayler Baird, a second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing ordinances, second reading, item 6A, creating water district 1210 for the purpose of constructing a six-inch water main in Greenwood Street from 48th to 49th and along 49th from Greenwood to Adams, and assessing the costs thereof against the benefited properties.
Okay, Suzy Philippi, Public Works. The petitioners are requesting the creation of a special assessment water district to serve their property at 4819 Greenwood Street. They recently demoed an older house on the property with plans to build new. Working with the Water Department, they were informed there was not an abiding water service that they could connect to, so the Water Department advised them to request a water district. Besides the petitioner, there are five other properties in this area that do not have access to abiding mains and are utilizing long service lines. All homes were built in 1925 and 1926. The four homes on 49th Street share one long service that feeds off a main to the north, while the two properties in Greenwood have separate long services that run to 48th Street. The proposed main would run in Greenwood Street from 48th to 49th and then extend down 49th to Adams. This would give each of the six property owners access to a budding main. The Water Department would also add three fire hydrants as this area is lacking sufficient fire protection. The estimated cost of the project is $152,000. With an agreement from the Water Department, we would use unit rather than frontage foot for assessment purposes since it involves a corner lot. Each property would be assessed $2,000 rather than base it on the frontage foot. This translates to subsidy from the Water Department of $140,000, which is actually 92% of the project. The total combined assessments from the property owners would be $12,000, which would be 8% of the project. If this project would get the green light, we'd plan to design and bid it this winter, fall/winter, and build it in 2019. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Councilman Camp, and then Councilwoman Lamb.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Philippi. Would you relate this to other projects and what the city subsidy has been percentage-wise where this falls?
This one is pretty close to the same. However, since they're adding the three hydrants, the city will be paying for those hydrants without adding a little bit more cost than... Most of the time, we, for water district, we run like about one block, and since this is actually two blocks, the hydrants will bring it up just a little bit, but it's usually within that range.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. So are the property owners... I'm sorry, did you say they're all signed on? They're all agreeable to this?
I have only heard from three.
Okay, so half of them, at least half of them are agreeable?
Three of them, three property owners actually live there. Three are rentals.
Okay.
So I have only heard from three.
The three that are living there?
No.
Okay.
A little bit of a split, but those were in favor.
Okay, I see. So those that you have been in touch with, are they aware of what the potential cost is?
We sent them all letters, and we had a neighborhood meeting that they were all invited to, however, those did not attend.
So does the letter state how much they anticipated the cost would be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilwoman Raybold?
If a property owner is struggling with the payment, can it be made in multiple payments?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
When it comes to special assessment, they have... They can take up to 20 years to pay, of course, with interest, but yes, they can pay upfront, I mean, soon as they are assessed, but they can take up to 20 years to pay.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Is anybody in the chamber would like to speak on this agenda item? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Michael Meyer. I live at 4827 Greenwood. This is the first notice I've gotten. I've got a letter in the mail the other day saying that my property is going to be assessed another $2,000 for this, and it didn't really state what anything was about on the letter, that's why I'm here. I'm like, I don't have two grand to give anybody right now. I mean, times are hard, so it kind of just really scared the hell out of me. So, I don't know. I'm glad I can take time to pay it, but I just want it known that I'm broke. I don't have money to pay for this.
I understand, and I'm glad that the question was asked and answered that you are aware that there can be arrangements made to make payments over time.
Right.
Anyone from the council have questions? Councilwoman Lamb?
Mr. Meyer, thanks for being here tonight. When you got the letter, do you know when you got the letter?
This one was sent out. I wasn't... I was not aware of a neighborhood meeting or anything like that.
That's what I wondered. That would have been my next question.
This was dated... Yeah, I got it, what, in last week? Beginning of last week?
I'm sorry, what was it dated?
It was dated September 14th.
Other questions from the council? Yep, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lamb, were you...
Does it say... Does it have, like, the fact about the community meeting or the neighborhood meeting on it?
It just says the council has received an ordinance creating a special water assessment district that you own the property at University Place, Block 22, Lot 3. Annual assessment rate for this water district is $2,000 for property, and if I want to, I can come to this meeting tonight and say something about it.
Okay. See, you don't believe you got a letter before that?
I'd not to my knowledge, no. It might have got lost in the mail or whatever. I didn't receive anything.
Thank you. Thank you for testifying tonight.
Councilman Camp?
Yes, I'm wondering if maybe later you could talk with Ms. Philippi on this and explain the situation, because if we're missing something on our side, that's important. We do not vote on this tonight, and if there's something unusual, she could always report back to us in the next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the chamber like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one else coming forward, can we move to our next item, Teresa, 6B?
Yes, I will actually call 6B through D together. They are approving the O Street and Canopy Street redevelopment agreement between Project Oscar, the city, and the West Haymarket JPA relating to the redevelopment of property generally located west of Canopy Street and north of O Street on land owned by the West Haymarket JPA adjacent to the Blue 3 parking garage and Olson headquarters building. Then we have the amending the fiscal year 1819 CIP to authorize and appropriate up to $2,805,000 in TIF funds, and then authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds.
Thank you.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. Also present today are the developers, and they'll be happy to make a presentation as well. This is the projected project that we're talking about, and it is in the block three of the blocks coming down from the arena. It is a four-story structure, 72,800 square feet. 67,000 of those square feet will be for office use. 5,800 will be for retail or an active edge, if you will, on the first floor with operating hours of at least eight to... I'm sorry, from 11 until 8 at night. The projected developer, Olson Associates, will occupy a portion of the building, and then they'll also look to lease the building to other businesses in the area. There are 317 monthly stalls in which they have parking rights, and that's in Blue 3. Blue 3 can adjust to and accommodate that interest. When that kind of revenue comes in, it supports the garage, although, of course, the important purpose of the garage is for the events at the arena, but this provides a steady income stream during the day hours for employees. The cost of the project, for our purposes, is estimated at $16 million, and there is a not-to-protest amount that appears in the agreement, but costs are subject to change. We have analyzed the costs and expect to receive $2.8.5 million in TIF that's allocated. You should think in terms of this project as an $18.8 million project. Their schedule is to begin before the end of the year and to complete the project by January of 2020. This is also a project that requires the assistance and support of the JPA. They will act on this before you act on this, because their action step occurs this week. Your voting decision will be following their actions, and it would be next week. This has been to the Urban Design Committee. They have received no conditional changes that were suggested and reacted to it very favorably. The final design will be subject to the standard protections, including the mayor's approval of a final design. There is a couple of different angles to see this from, but perhaps this overhead will give you a view of some of the property interests. This is the building to be built. This is 18 stalls of parking. The back-of-house operations will be done through this alleyway and this alley here. This section in red is two kinds of property. One, it's property owned by Olsons but for which there's a public easement. That includes this part of the alley and this little triangle. And then this is right-of-way, and that will be continued to be owned by the city in the right-of-way that we have. There will be streetscape and landscaping and essentially, if you were to step down there and look up and down Canopy Street, that is the generic design that will be applied here. There will be some pavers and some planters as well. The final landscape design will be provided by Olsons, again with mayoral approval. The amount of money that will be spent for the purchase of the land is quite different from the Olson First project, which was just the second time that we sold land in the West Haymarket. And remember, it's JPA who sells land, not the city. It's JPA land. That land was valued, appraised, and sold at $15 a square foot. This land is appraised and sold at $42.20 a square foot, which shows the effect of time and what's happened in the West Haymarket and the value of this land. So the developer pays $1.3... $1,370,000 for the land. They will be able to use TIF proceeds to do that. The JPA will perform a couple of functions. One of those functions will be to demo the parking, surface parking lots that's there, and the second thing is to assume $245,000 of streetscape costs out of essentially their proceeds from the sale of the land. That will leave the administrative costs of issuance and the administration fee, and then the streetscape design, which is estimated at $28,000, and that will be executed with TIF money, and it'll be done by Olsons and the JPA. And then there are amounts for the facade enhancement at $743,000, and energy enhancement of $615,000. The... There is no affirmation or commitment to grow jobs. That will depend on who rents the property and what their building plans are, but there is an interesting fact, and that is in Olson 1. Upon its construction, Olson did expand its employment by 50 jobs. So this is an attractive place. Workers want to be there, and it would be... It would be a lovely benefit if it happened to grow jobs, but that's not part of the commitments that are raised in this situation. The building will use the DEC energy method, and by so doing, it adds volume to the system, thereby reducing the amortized cost for all of the participants, including the arena. So there will be multiple beneficiaries from the expansion of the program for this project. This went more quickly than most, probably because Olson Associates came in with a very clear sense of what their costs and expectations were. They're also working on a timeline that allows them to complete the project in the timeframe that they want. They're here to answer questions. Bond council's here to answer questions with respect to the bonds, but perhaps you have questions for me on the project, and I open myself up to the committee for that purpose.
I think Councilman Christensen does have questions for you.
So on the first floor, there's a retail plan to use retail there, and my understanding is currently that plan calls for those businesses that lease space there to be open until about 8:00 PM?
Yes, and one of the reasons is you want that active edge. You want light, transparency, traffic. It gives the pedestrian a sense of comfort and ease when doing that, and it's rather consistent with this area that doesn't close down at 5:00 at night.
Okay. If there were difficulty, if, say, within a certain period of time, to fill those spaces with those kind of businesses, would there be an option for Olson Associates to lease them to other businesses that won't be open until 8:00 PM?
It's not in the redevelopment agreement. We would probably have to decide if that kind of an alteration was so significant as to come back to the council for an amendment, or if it could be handled, as we have on occasion, by minor changes being done at the mayoral level. So the expectation and commitment is there, but there's a trapdoor, if necessary.
Other questions from the council? Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I just want to clarify something. Thanks for being here tonight. You said that it passed the design committee with no conditions. Are you... And I just want to make sure I'm talking to the design committee and not Planning Commission.
Right. This is where all TIF projects go to the Urban Design Committee, and it's heavy with architects in particular, but not uniformly architects. And there, they look at compatibility, design elements, ways that the street could be softened or that the signage could be more appropriate. So we oftentimes get specific design suggestions. They don't rise to the level of absolute mandates, but the city administration pays a lot of attention to the advice that body gives us when we do get recommendations, and we quite commonly continue the discussions with the developer on incorporating as many of those ideas. In this case, there were none.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Councilwoman Camp?
Yes, just wanted to clarify. You said that the project was 16 million, and then the TIF was 2.805 million, but then I thought I heard you say that the total would be 18?
18.8? Did I... 16 plus 2.8?
So the TIF isn't applied toward the 16 million. It's a...
That's right. That's the valuation that will be placed on the building and the taxes and the... And there... I'm sorry. The valuation will support the TIF. The cost of the building itself will be 16 million or more, and that's why we list it at 16 million.
So you don't know if it's going to be 18.8 million?
We don't.
So you're just...
We... The part that we do care about is what valuation that building is placed at, because the valuation determines the TIF. And we have a not-to-protest number of $16 million, which means the appraiser, the assessor, if they assessed any amount up to $16 million, Olson would accept that, because we're all anticipating that it would be at least that amount. It's possible it could be more, but at this point, they're agreeing that 16 million is the right number and that they won't protest an assessor's valuation of that amount or less.
And if the assessor came out with a lesser amount, you're hoping over time that that would still cover the TIF repayment?
It does, and to the extent that we've had problems on that area, councilman, they're receding into the rearview mirror of time. That has occurred, but it's been a while since that's happened. If there's anything, I think it's... The assessor seems to give some weight, I'm guessing, I don't know, it's their shop, but valuations are placed on it in this context by all of you and us have carried a kind of weight, or maybe they're not giving us any weight and they've just come to very similar conclusions that we've done, and that's been the common result in recent years.
Okay. And is this, as far as the bonds, the TIF bonds, will those be externally placed, or are they developer purchased or combination?
The developer will be responsible for it. There is a statement in this agreement that the bonds are not to exceed 6%.
On the interest rate?
Mm-hmm. I know that's a topic of interest to you, and I specifically made a note to pass that along.
But would they be developer purchased, or are they put to a bank or something?
You may ask the developers to how they do it. The point being that the... When we use the phrase developer purchased, it doesn't mean that developer necessarily purchases. Sometimes they get a financier, but when we use that phrase, we now come to mean the city is not standing behind the bond and has no risk that should the mechanism not proceed with the values that were there, that the city would be looked upon to bear responsibility for the bond. It's not a city bond. We don't stand behind it.
But the city never has stood behind a TIF.
In some of the early ones, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gayler Baird?
It's exciting to see this project come forward, and it's worth remembering that before there was at West Haymarket, Olson came forward and decided to take the risk to be the first company to set up shop. And to see them looking to expand all this time later, it's a coming full circle, building on one of the last buildable lots is left, and I know that rapid growth has exceeded everyone's expectations. So my questions today really are more just about the basics, typical questions on a TIF project, wondering if you could tell us if there's anything unusual about the way TIF is being administered in this particular case, and then also, just with facade enhancements, could you detail anything about that, since I couldn't find it in the agreement?
Sure, and you won't find it there, by the way.
I saw the beautiful pictures, but without the professional expertise, I don't know what upgrades we're getting.
By the way, I think that might be part of the story that you'll be able to ask the developers. I wasn't able to assume the responsibility to speak of how excited the developer is with this project and their rationale. They'll do that themselves, and it's part of the story they'd like to tell you. With respect to the facade enhancements, our understanding back and forth is that this is not necessarily identical but similar to the project of Olson 1. We don't recite building materials here. That's part of the outcome that occurs once there is an agreement, that they would bring back to the mayor for approval of that. I think it would be fair to say that if you were to look down Canopy Street, you'd see two things that are very similar. One, the canopy streetscape will be what you see. The building itself will bear a very strong identity, but it will have some interesting impacts, and this is one of them. It doesn't look to be much.
Wait for it.
Oops.
Wait for it.
Have I disappeared?
No. Three, two, one.
Thank you. This little change right here has an effect of making a somewhat different statement. We think it's a more welcoming statement. It serves as an interesting effect of what will be happening here, and it is the place where the... It's not the same building done a second time. It is a building somewhat informed by the previous building. But the developer and the city recognize that the building materials must be of a high order and that they need to prove up on what that is. We don't recite building materials, and we don't normally recite building materials in redevelopment agreements, but that's the expectation.
So the facade enhancement all just have to do with building materials, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Our position in the definition of the Community Redevelopment Act is that the benefits need to be perceived by the public, and the public benefit of an external wall is you're the neighbor to that wall. Yes, you are the neighbor to the... However they choose to build it out inside the building, but that's very much a private impact. But the compatibility, the quality of the design affects the neighboring structures and buildings and compatibility. And secondarily, the Community Redevelopment Act talks about the prevention of blight in the future. The higher quality the building you build, the longer the life that building has, and you push off the frontier of that building... you push off the frontier of that building, gradually becoming tired, old, and eventually perhaps dilapidated. So, a higher quality building material, we define as having a public benefit. But we don't do the same analysis on the inside of the building. We think that's a private benefit, and we don't take that into account. There are cities who interpret things differently, Omaha being one of them, but we've taken that definition from our law department.
In previous projects, we've seen TIF pay for skywalks to the garages. In this case, is that happening? I don't see it in the list.
I don't see it in the listing either.
Okay.
No. I'll be informed differently if I sit down and made a mistake, however.
Thank you.
I'll pop back up, and then I'll have to refute myself in the rebuttal.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the chamber like to comment on this agenda item?
All right. Good evening. I'm Brad Stripmadder with Olson Associates, 601 P Street. First, I just want to thank the staff for, as Dave mentioned, helping us move this project to this point as quickly as we have. We came up with this concept in really May and moved it very, moved it quickly very forward, so we appreciate that. They've done fantastic in working with us to get to this point. As he mentioned, Olson Associates moved into our current headquarters building in the West Haymarket in 2014, and it's been a fantastic move for our company. I think the district that was created and the vision for it has helped us recruit people to come work for us, which has been really the most challenging thing for our business over the last six or seven years, as I'm sure it is for a lot of businesses, because the shortage of labor is evident. And, you know, we bring clients to this location, we show them Lincoln, we show them who we are, and they believe in us. So, I would just say first, the district itself has been a huge benefit, and we're excited about moving forward. The comment about jobs, I'll just make a quick comment about that. Yes, we didn't understand what to really expect when we moved in in 2014, and we brought over from our previous location about 225 people to the location, and we planned for some modest growth. That growth happened much more quickly than we anticipated and resulted in about the 50 new jobs that just Olson Associates has taken on since then. We've got other tenants in the building that quickly leased some of that space, both on the first floor with the retail and then the fourth floor with our office tenant there. And talking to those tenants, especially the office, they've seen similar kinds of impacts to their business, where they've been able to grow, attract employees, and become a real home for them. So, we think that has a lot of momentum. And when this project came up in May, we said, wow, we're still growing. Where are we going to put more people? We have about 28 office locations in eight states around kind of the Midwest and West, and every time we grow, we add people in Lincoln in addition to those more remote locations. And so, this is our home, this is our corporate headquarters, this is where we kind of have grown up and lived. And so, we look at this next phase of the project as really being able to establish ourselves for really the foreseeable future. I joke a little bit about it'll be someone else's decision later on in life when I'm not here, about what to do if we outgrow these spaces, but we are really looking forward to that opportunity. And saw this, as you mentioned, one of the last pieces of property right there in the heart of the West Haymarket District. So, timing is good, we think. We also have interest from other tenants, other businesses that want to locate there. We don't have any real first floor tenants in the retail space yet, but as we've talked with staff, that's probably the biggest risk in this project is leasing to those tenants and those types of tenants. And you won't really get a great feel for that until you build a space and they can see it and touch it a little bit. So, we have a lot of excitement, both for us and for other businesses in the community. So, I'm going to keep my comments real brief, just because I think Dave did a fantastic job explaining the project, and happy to answer any questions about anything related to Olson Associates or the project.
Thank you. Councilman Eskridge?
Yes. Thanks, Brad. So, in answer to the question that was posed to Mr. Landis, the parking bridge is, that's not a TIF project?
Correct. Those are privately funded.
Okay. And this, but you are doing that?
Correct.
And this will connect to the blue garage? And adequate parking there for the project?
Absolutely. We will, as part of the project, it's proposed to build a walk bridge on about the third level over to the south end of the blue garage. So, in our current building, we have a walk bridge over to the north end of the blue three garage. So, we'll do a mirrored kind of arrangement there. Then, we also will connect the two buildings. They won't connect physically like with a shared wall, but they, because they span the 20-foot wide alleyway that Dave kind of pointed to where part of that red was, we'll connect that with a walkway so that both buildings can operate as one and share common spaces. And as the tenants need flexibility for leasing, including us, you'll have people potentially in both buildings, and you'll have a nice connectivity, so it really functions as one unit. The parking in general, the blue three garage has been fantastic for us so far. Talking with the city staff, including Wayne Mixdorf, he said it can accommodate it, as Dave mentioned. The parking that's been constructed by the JPA, which, thinking back to our 2014 project, that parking garage, the blue three, was advanced in the schedule in order to accommodate our move-in, and we're very thankful for that, because I would tell you, if you polled our employees about what they like most about our building, once they get over just the, everything's new and better than our old facility, the covered parking is probably number two on their list. So, it's been a fantastic amenity, and we see no issues with how it will connect for the future building.
Very good.
Other questions from the council? Councilman Kemp?
Yes, thank you very much for all your testimony on this big project. I think I heard or read somebody said it's not, an executive usually has a chance in his or her lifetime to have one new headquarters, and here you're doing two. So, it is quite a compliment to you and your organization. On the parking in the garage, I think in the, what you had in the north area, that was segregated for you by chain. Will it be the same for this new, or will this new be more open, which helps us or helps the JPA facilitate the parking more in after hours?
Yeah. First of all, I think it's either a blessing or a curse to have to make this decision twice in your lifetime, and I think it's a blessing right now for me. So, the, in the original building, we had two needs for parking. One, we had some ground-level parking that we needed, because we have trucks and equipment that stays in the garage overnight for our business use. So, these weren't employee vehicles, and we needed a place to know that they were going to be able to park every night 24/7, 365 days a year. And then, we also had a segregated section on the third level of the garage, which was a, if you pay a little bit more, it's gated off for whoever the tenants were that wanted to pay that on an individual basis. The new facility would not have either of those. We don't feel like we need that. There is, what we understand is there's adequate parking in that segregated area on the third floor that if employees or tenants of the new building wanted to occupy some of that, there would still be space available in that, so we don't need to create any more. But our overall parking is just a general number of parking stalls in the agreement that we believe will accommodate the building.
Okay. Good. That does help everybody, I think.
Yep, absolutely.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the chamber like to testify on this item?
Thank you.
Forgot to say thank you. Hello, my name is Robert Way, R.O.B.E.R.T.W.A.Y. I live at 801 Elavato Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Welcome, Robert.
I just had a couple of questions from this issue. It was an issue I was going to bring up, but all the parking is going to be monthly parking?
Questions was kind of weird. Were you still you giving us a presentation rather than asking questions?
Okay. Well, my question, the, if all the parking is monthly, that doesn't seem to appeal to visitors and other people outside of the area who are coming in for, to do business there. It seems to be residents. The other thing is, TIF funding is a great idea. I'm publicly saying I'm okay with government spending money to get projects off the ground. But if I heard him right, property value in this area has gone from $15 to $44 in a period of time. So, you put the money in initially to get the project off the ground, now you have a going concern. Why is it in the city's interest to spend more money for something everybody seems to want to do anyway? I understand that to get the pump primed, it's a good idea to spend the money, but from everything I'm hearing here, we're not adding the type of parking which allows Lincoln residents to come and visit, so we're not doing the whole community. We seem to be just focusing on giving parking in an area where, I don't know, but I assume the rents in that area are awful high, that the capitalism would, parking would be able to be affordable, because the people there want the convenience of being able to get to their car. And so, I don't understand why it's in the city's interest to fund monthly parking in what I'm assuming is a high-rent area.
I understand. We'll take some more testimony, see if anyone else wants to testify, and then in the rebuttal portion of the program, perhaps your questions will be addressed.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Looks like we got to the rebuttal portion a lot faster than I thought we would. Mr. Landis? Yes, would you please come up again? Would you like to comment on any of the questions from the last testifier?
Monthly parking is where a person has a continuing expectation and ability to park in the garage. And this garage was designed for the purpose of supporting the special events in the arena. That's why it exists. Monthly parking does not conflict with that, because monthly parkers buy the rights, but not the special event parking rights. So, they get to use the garage, and essentially, it works out during the day. And then, when Katy Perry hits town, people who want to go to Katy Perry pay event parking to go there. But while I wasn't sure exactly of the nature of the question, we also allow transient parking. Transient parking is where we have stalls that are not assigned or they're not purchased on a monthly basis, so that there's ability for shoppers, guests, visitors to use the garage. It is the case that as a system, we've had so much growth in employment that the amount of transient parking in our garages has gone down. It's one of the reasons we'd like to expand our holdings and build more garage stalls, so that we could have more transient parking. But our system does have transient parking, and there is, at this point, significant transient parking opportunities in these garages. With respect to the question of, don't we have a going concern? The same question that we would ask of everyone, we will ask for this developer, and they will aver in a statement to the city that but for the role of TIF, this project in this form would not occur. And the answer, in a sense, is this. The building that will be built is going to be an expensive building, but there are two different things that operate to make a building effective. And one, the rents that you can get on the building, and then the cost of the building itself. And Olson is essentially betting on the fact that even though rents at the moment are at a certain place in time that produces pressure on them, that over time, this building will be successful, but it doesn't start with the notion that the rents that will be exacted will be equal to the cost of building the building. So, there is a way in which they're saying, for us to build this quality of building in this location, we need assistance. And we've agreed to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, pardon me.
Yes.
About my colleague, but I think maybe the attorney or the Olson folks wanted to say something, and we kind of rushed to the rebuttal.
I did kind of rush, yeah.
Well, I shouldn't say...
No, no, I'm okay with that.
You're in charge, you're the dictator here.
No.
Hey, 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 hey. I felt a breeze through my hair moving so quickly. I thought I was on a motorcycle.
This is a big project, and I just want to make sure the applicant and its representatives, if they had something to share, they could. And maybe I misread their expressions.
Okay. Do you want your questions answered first, Councilman Lamb, and then I'll open it up and say, would anyone else like to testify about this item?
Just since you're up here, thank you. Okay.
Not the official rebuttal.
Right. Can you just explain, as far as the TIF? I just want to make clear that you had mentioned the higher square footage costs or pricing of this particular land, which I appreciate knowing that, and which Mr. Way brought up. The TIF project has to do with those property taxes on the increase in valuation, correct? So, the taxes on the current value will, are not subject to being returned back in the form of TIF. Is that right?
What happens is, we freeze the existing value.
Okay.
Taxes are collected on that existing value.
For the duration.
Although, it's now public land, and because it's public land, there isn't a taxpayer per se. Well, there's a valuation. That continues in place, and taxes on that base value are sent to the schools, the county, NRD, and the city in equal portion. And then, on the growth in valuation, that money is dedicated, the taxes on that valuation growth are used to essentially, over time, repay the bond that usually allows the construction to occur at the beginning. It's a way of collecting up money over 15 years and putting it up front when the developer needs it to build the building, and then pay for it over time.
So, from a short perspective, short-term perspective, what is now collecting zero tax will be taxable and taxed return to the city and the school district on the base value.
On the base value.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this agenda item? And as the Councilman Kemp pointed out, dictator show likes to move fast, so if you plan to testify later in the meeting, don't dilly-dally.
Good evening, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski, I've been working with Project Oscar Two, whose principals are Olson Associates on the project. So, maybe just a couple of things to add to the questions that were brought up by the community member. With respect to that monthly parking, may have been under the impression that the city was providing that. Well, they're providing the garage, but the parking stalls will be paid for by the developer and/or the tenants of that building. So, actually, it provides another income stream for the city to sort of offset those times when it's not being utilized for the public events. And then, just, you know what? Another idea, really with respect to the TIF and why it's still necessary, as a project's growing, so are the property values, so are the costs of various things. So, not only to build this type of building, but to do it with the improvements that the city wants to see in this area, the streetscape, and to be able to accommodate that property value, all of those things go into the overall cost of the project, which still necessitate the need for TIF in order to make it work. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions for this testifier?
Thank you.
Yes, Council?
Would you take a little bit of time just to elaborate on the public enhancements that we can expect? I know we've got a connection to the District Energy Corp. The facade enhancements, we heard, just in general, could you elaborate?
Right. So, the facade enhancements, if Brett has, he can add some more details with respect to that. There's some facade enhancements, there's the energy enhancements for the building, which some of that involves connecting up to the District Energy Corp. and others, just using more energy-efficient type improvements in the building. Obviously, the streetscape, that's something that's being funded, in this case, by the JPA, but overall, public dollars not necessarily coming from the TIF. So, it's largely the land purchase to accommodate that cost. It's the design for the streetscape, it's the design of the, well, actually, the design of the demolition is on the developer, and then it's the energy and the facade enhancements. If you'd like specifically more deals about facade enhancements, Brad, you have...
All right. So, the facade enhancements, and we're really following the lead that was set in 2014 with our current building. And as Dave mentioned, the building design itself, which where the facade enhancements come into play, is really a similar design, so a lot of the materials are the same. And what we did then, and we did, and we'll do it again, is we look at sort of standard building construction for, you know, a type of facility that's similar, so used similar material, whether it's brick or some kind of, you know, ethos material or other things that I could probably go on about for a while. We looked at that, and when we first sat down to design the first building, working with the city staff and understanding what the urban design committee was after, and then the district, the West Haymarket District's overall goals for long-term durability, sustainability, and sort of the things Dave was alluding to, to make sure these are high-quality facilities for a long time. We looked at the cost differential between sort of those standard building materials and the enhanced materials. On our particular building, again, this goes a little bit in the weeds, so I'll make it quick, is the material that you see out there, the vertical panels are called a tactile material, and it's a concrete material that's specially made and then fastened to the outside of a building, so it has a nice, clean look, it's got a high-quality look, and it's very durable from, you know, based on weather and everything, because all of it's weatherproof and is behind it. So, it sort of provides an extra level of quality that is, and that was the major cost of the facade, as you can imagine, because most of the building is that. In addition, there's some metal and some other things... In addition, there's some metal and some other things on the building that, again, kind of go through that same process, and we worked out that when we designed the original building. So this building will use that exact same tactile material, it'll use the same kinds of metal. Again, it's a different design, as Dave pointed out, in terms of its geometry. It's not a solid wall against the right-of-way, it's got some different enhancements. But generally, the material will be the same, including the brick that's used on the base of the building and the windows and so forth. So you get into a lot of that conversation. Some of that material then sorts the double in the energy enhancement side. So, you know, the glass may have additional treatment that keeps the energy from escaping in and out during seasonal changes, you know, and I'm not talking about gaps in windows or anything, I'm talking about how the sun affects that heat loss or heat gain during those seasons. So you get into that conversation, so it's sort of a combination of those things. And again, I'm not an architect, but I've learned a lot about this because we're now in the second building, but that's sort of the basic theory behind the facade enhancements. And so it's all wrapped up really in materials, to be honest. The last thing I would say is, the way these buildings are designed, and the first one was this way, it has a lot of exterior skin because of the design. And again, that's working with the city staff to understand what was the vision for the, and the JPA for the district, and how to best present the highest-quality building. And so that increases the cost, it's really not as much material-related in terms of upgrading materials, but just volume of material. So you kind of put all that together, and you sort of estimate the cost of one versus the other, and that's how we come up with the facade. It's a long dissertation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you. One last time, would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Long pause, seeing no one. Teresa, can we go to the next agenda item?
Yes, then we have item 6E, approving the food and beverage services agreement for the Pinnacle Bank Arena and related facilities between the city and SMG Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as Saver, for a one-year term commencing October 3, 2018, with the option to renew for one additional three-year term.
Good evening, Chris Connolly, Chief Assistant City Attorney. When SMG was hired back in 2012 to manage the arena amongst the other agreements, there was a food and beverage agreement that was executed, and we currently have one with them, but is set to expire next August. However, SMG would like to be able to renew their liquor license, which they need to be able to do in October of this year, and so they need to get a new agreement in place now so that it covers the period that would go into October of 2019. And so what we have before you is essentially the same agreement that we have had with them. The other thing that this contract will do will be to sync it up essentially with their management agreement, which is set to expire in 2022. Now, for practical purposes, what will happen is, in a couple of years, we will start to look at an RFP process to decide what happens in 2022, but we thought it was important, and I think SMG sees it as important, to be able to put both those contracts on the same track and have them terminate at essentially the same time. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Camp?
Yes, I noticed this agreement goes still on the August 31 basis. Is there any intent to perhaps, or a way that you could coordinate it with our licensing for liquor licenses, so they go through that October period?
We talked about that, and of course, the original agreement had an expiration date of August 31, 2016, and it renewed automatically on the same basis. And so Liquor Commission apparently is satisfied with that arrangement, and so we wanted to do the same thing here. And so by putting it on an August 31 termination date, and what happens under this agreement is, if we did not want to continue it beyond August 31, 2019, we'd have to give them six months' notice. So by doing it this way, like I said, it'll sync it up with the management agreement. We felt that that was a better way to do it. We did talk about trying to extend it beyond, but then we'd have to try and sync it back up with the management agreement. We felt that syncing it up with the management agreement right of way would be the better way. And we, right now, I have no reason to believe that we would terminate it early, and so by March of 2019, if it's not terminated by then, it will automatically renew for the final three years.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak about this agenda item? Come forward. Hearing done. Shall we go to our, let's end our public hearing on ordinances on second reading and related resolutions?
Yes. We have no ordinances on third reading. Our resolutions on first reading are items 8A through C. Ordinances first reading are items 9A and B. Our pending list are items 11A through D. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time, since it is an open microphone session. I would remind those coming forward to please state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet.
Okay, everyone.
One question. And I haven't had a chance to talk with our colleague, Ms. Gator Bear, but there's been talk that she's going to introduce legislation, and by what the clerk read, if there is pending legislation.
Well.
And I just want to make sure.
Just a point of order, thinking of public, of putting forward legislation is not the same thing as putting it on the agenda.
Okay, well, people have been voted the other way, so.
Yeah, there is none, there's none at present. Okay, guys, a quick show of hands, I'm thankful that people are lining up, and there'll be two different microphones, and we'll bounce back and forth. Show of hands, how many people plan to testify that are not in line, in line? Just a big show of hands. So we did some fast math, if we give everybody five minutes, that will be, we'll be here for a little over two hours. There's a thumb up in the back. We thought about shortening it maybe four minutes, can everybody think they can accommodate that, and we'll go, we'll get, everybody get a chance, and we'll still make it home at a reasonable time? Now, what will happen is, the clerk will set her clock for three minutes, it will go off, and beep. That means you have one minute left. I will verbally remind you, you have one minute left. At the end of that, start wrapping it up, I'll encourage you to finish at that point. This is public comment. As the clerk read, you cannot speak about anything that is on the agenda now or will be on a future agenda. As Councilman Camp asked, and we discussed briefly, there are no resolutions or ordinances before the city council regarding issues that might have been in the public recently. This is public comment, you're allowed four minutes to tell us what you're thinking about And here we go.
Good evening.
Sir, would you go ahead and come to the next microphone here on the side and prepare? I'm sorry, and here we go.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Gailey, and I'm president of Nebraskans Against Gun Violence. I've also lived in Lincoln for about 15 years, and I have two children in Lincoln Public Schools. I've come here tonight, along with, I believe, several people behind me, to ask the council to please consider creating a firearm safe storage ordinance for the city of Lincoln. A safe storage ordinance is one that requires firearm owners to keep their guns locked up in such a way that unauthorized users cannot access them when they're outside of the owner's direct control. There's a lot of data to support a safe storage ordinance, and I'm happy to email some of that to all of you after the meeting. But to my mind, just as important as the data which gets lost in verbal commentary like this, is just the ethical mandate for such an ordinance. So I wanted to just put before the council two plain truths. The first is that every single firearm suicide by a child is preventable. The second is that every crime gun begins as a legal gun. Guns don't grow on trees for kids or other people to get their hands on them, someone had to be irresponsible with that firearm somewhere along the way. A safe storage ordinance is about blocking that point of irresponsibility. So it's a preventative public health measure, the way that child-proof caps on medicine is, having a fence around your swimming pool is, smoke detectors are, it's about preventing tragedy before it occurs. And God knows that with 40,000 firearm deaths in the United States per year, the current policy of NRA gun nihilism is not working, and it's time for something new. In the years 2010 to 2016, about 108 Nebraska children died by firearm, and about half of those were suicides. Every single one of those deaths was preventable, and every single one of those deaths resulted from irresponsibility with an adult and a firearm. So I've watched this year as Lincoln put more armed police in our schools to try to, among other things, protect our kids from school shootings. We make our kids practice duck-and-cover routines and rehearse for the next school shooting, yet we haven't done the thing that could prevent 80% of mass shootings committed by students at a school, and that is forcing the people who own the guns to lock them up. So I'm asking you today to pass this ordinance to reduce suicides among children, especially accidents, school shootings, and other homicides, and so that we can look at our children and say, we're doing something about this problem besides making it yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda, how do you spell your last name?
G-A-I-L-E-Y.
What's your address?
2510 South 74th Street.
Ms. Gailey?
Just a question I'll ask anybody who wants to talk on this particular subject, and the answer can be yes, no, or I'd prefer not to answer. Are you a firearms owner?
No. I wouldn't have one in my house because they pose, it's eight times more likely to kill someone you know and love than to boogeyman that the NRA uses to sell them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next testifier.
Yeah, my name is Doug Atkins, A-T-K-I-N. I live at 6431 Blackstone Road here in Lincoln. On July 1, 2016, my daughter Heather, her husband Joe, a United States Army captain, were traveling with their soon-to-be-three-year-old son Matthew from Wilmington, North Carolina, back to Fort Riley, Kansas. They stopped at the home of another Army captain, a West Point classmate of Joe's, and one of their groomsmen at their wedding in Clarksville, Tennessee, to spend the night. While there, Matthew found a loaded handgun on a nightstand in the bedroom where they were to spend the night. Being a nearly-three-year-old boy, he picked it up and looked at it. Matt didn't see his third birthday the next day.
It'll come up. Give us just a moment.
Safe storage is personal to me. Clarksville, Tennessee, like Lincoln, Nebraska, does not have any safe storage laws or ordinances. There were no consequences for this negligence. I grew up shooting guns, I grew up hunting, I know a lot about guns. This isn't about outlawing or restricting gun ownership, but it's simply requiring responsibility and accountability from those that own guns, just like we require that responsibility from somebody that owns an automobile, a swimming pool, a dog. Laws establish the behavior that we expect as a society, including the responsibilities we have as citizens. Laws aren't made for those who are responsible and have common sense, but for those who don't. I'm asking the Lincoln City Council to consider implementing a safe storage ordinance in Lincoln to protect our young people. There are many different ideas of what safe storage consists of. I have mine, and it probably differs from others on both sides of the spectrum. What I would like to ask the city council to do is to work through a task force or other system to develop safe storage ordinance for Lincoln that is practical, enforceable, and effective. That task force should consider the input of various interests: safety advocates, law enforcement, industry, and gun owners. I would be happy to assist the city in any way that you would like in doing that. And the last thing I want to say to you is, if you have kids, hold them close, hold them dear. If you have guns, lock them up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
I think Councilman Christiansen has a question.
I'm going to ask the same question of everybody, whatever side they're on of this issue. Are you a gun owner?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir.
Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Atkins. I'm Matthew's grandma. He was the joy of our lives, he made friends easily, he loved trucks, he loved dark chocolate, and he loved to snuggle with his mama. As my husband stated, Matthew died July 1, 2016, the day before his third birthday. My daughter Heather and her husband were so happy to have Matthew in their lives and did everything good parents need to do to keep their children protected, healthy, and happy. Matthew's parents were very conscientious about keeping him safe. They researched and purchased the highest-rated car seat, there were covers on the electrical outlets, and locks on the cupboards. My son's hunting rifle, my son-in-law's hunting rifle was kept locked up and out of sight. Not all parents are as conscientious about keeping children safe, and not all homes are safe for kids. Not all gun owners are responsible, even when they know children will be visiting their home. Parents should not have to worry about their child's safety when they're visiting a friend's house. Matthew was only out of his parents' sight for seconds, but it was long enough for him to pick up a loaded handgun and shoot himself in the face. Matthew's death was a preventable tragedy that shouldn't have happened. Had that gun been stored safely, Matthew would be alive today. No family should ever lose their baby, toddler, or child because basic gun safety is being neglected. Because Clarksville, Tennessee, had no safe storage laws, there were no legal consequences for the gun's owners, even though a child had died in their home because of their carelessness. Lack of safe storage laws means that there are greater penalties for parking in an expired meter than there are if a child is killed or injured due to owner negligence in securing a firearm. According to the Brady Center, one out of three American homes with kids have guns, and nearly 2 million children live in a home with loaded and unsecured weapons. Eight children are accidentally shot every day with unsecured firearms in the home. Let's take action now so this preventable tragedy does not happen to the people you love and care about. Let's protect the children of Lincoln from the heartbreaking tragedy that happened to my grandson. Gun ownership should include storing those firearms safely and responsibly. Safe storage saves lives, and there should be consequences for gun owners who choose to ignore gun safety.
Ms. Atkins?
I have the answer already because they live in the same home.
Okay, I'm good with that. Next testifier, please.
Thank you.
And will the next person come to the next microphone and prepare? Yes, yes.
I'm Eileen, Jean Eileen Durgan Clinchard. I live at 638 North 25th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Spell the, I've got it written here, so she has the information. So city council members, I move by what I do is heard, so that's difficult. I'm an 88-year-old grandmother of five, great-grandmother of 10. I've lived in Lincoln at that address and been a voting, registered voter for 32 years in Lincoln. One grandson attends East High, and I thank you all for your service here and providing the time to hear from us, your constituents. I certainly, when I think of the 10 great-grandchildren, they're not here in town, but I think of what we have just heard, and that can happen anywhere. We in Lincoln need a city ordinance which will require all registered gun owners to keep their guns, obviously when not in use, unloaded and locked away, with all ammunition also locked away in a separate location. We want all to be safe. I'm sure you'll hear statistics to do with accidental shootings of kids here and elsewhere. There are already multiple gun ordinances and regulations on the books in Nebraska, but none in Lincoln that require owner responsibility, owner responsibility, for the safe storage of his or her legally-registered gun. With the right privilege of owning a gun comes the responsibility to ensure that it will not be used by others or yourself in any illegal way. I fully support such an ordinance and ask that you develop one that will have teeth to meet the need. As a retired LPS teachers and parent plus, I know that children and adolescents are frequently curious and satisfy that curiosity, even sometimes when rules seem to be in the way. Children of all ages are tempted to show what they know or think they know, and I'm best, children of all ages, I mean us, everyone. Accidents to others or themselves happen that would not happen if a gun had been locked up, unloaded, and ammunition elsewhere. And toddlers don't know the difference between a toy and a real gun. How a gun is used, response, how a gun is used is the responsibility of the owner, and there should be appropriate consequences. If the gun is stolen, there must be, it must be reported to alert authorities that a legal gun has become illegal. There are so many potential situations where a gun loose in a home or car can be used abusively or in self- abusively or in self-destruction, or accidentally in self-destruction. It is not too much to ask that this gun be stored, locked safely away from impetuous, angry, or curious hands. As a parent plus, whose family members are not gun owners, I want to feel safe when my fifteen-year-old grandson visits elsewhere. I want to be confident that even though other parents may own guns, that they are responsible and guns locked up safely. Such an ordinance not only serves direct prevention, it also serves to open much-needed conversation amongst neighbors, friends, and the community. It would make clear the responsibilities of one who chooses to own guns for whatever purpose. The information would be provided to the, would be provided at the time of gun registration, the information about the ordinance. The City Council needs to respond. You need to respond to the concerns of the people in Lincoln, by the people who've come here tonight and others. City councils, city lawyers, council know how to word such an ordinance, I hope, taking into consideration the variety of details concerning pre-existing laws. I do not currently own a gun, but I have been, my father started me shooting at targets when I was nine years old, and when I was at summer camp, we learned to use a rifle, and he was always very proud of that aspect of things that I would do. The other thing was that when my husband went shooting, not shooting, well, target shooting, he was really expert on that, too, but hunting, brought home the deer, my father's question to him was, "Did you eat the deer?" And of course, yes, we ate the deer. But other than that, my father said, "Yeah, but you have plenty to eat anyway. Why don't you just use your camera, your photography, and shoot the deer from that angle?"
Councilman Christianson?
I have a question about what you're proposing here. So, you are proposing that we...
I'm sorry?
It seems to me you're proposing here that we institute a storage regulation, but you're also proposing that we have, we institute gun registration in Lincoln. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I'm not fully understanding.
Okay. It looks to me like you're proposing that we institute gun registration in Lincoln. None exists at this time. There is no gun registration in Lincoln or in Nebraska, so I'm asking you if you're proposing that we institute that based on...
I guess I'm not proposing it, but I, I thought it already, that you had to do something to get a gun. You can't just walk in and buy a gun and not be known, right?
You have to have a background check, but there's no registration for firearms in Nebraska.
But that background check would be on record.
None that would be accessible.
To law enforcement would be. So, that is, in a sense, a kind of, okay. I won't, I won't argue the point. Yes, I think registration would be very good. I'm not, that's not, I don't want to muddy the issue. The important thing is that the guns, whatever guns you have, however you have them, should be stored safely and under lock and key.
Thank you.
Is that...
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
My name is Camille Yacono. Camille, C-A-M-I-L-L-E, Yacono, I-A-C-O-N-O. I live at twenty-five, ten, South Seventy-fourth Street, and I am an eighth-grade student at Luffler Middle School. I'm here today to ask the City Council to pass a safe storage ordinance. This common-sense gun law could save lives. It could be the difference between whether or not a would-be school shooter manages to take their parent's gun. Students are often taught to practice lockdown drills and are forced into, like, a state of constant paranoia in their own schools, while so-called responsible gun owners don't have to take even the most basic steps to ensure that their fellow American citizens aren't killed. I believe that human lives are more important than the constant unquestioned convenience of those who choose to own machines designed to kill. A couple of years ago, in sixth grade at another Luxe Middle School, one of our teachers instructed us that in case of a school shooting, children with darker-colored shirts should stand in the front of the room, and kids with brighter-colored shirts in the back to make us less visible to an armed intruder, as if somehow a black shirt could shield us from a bullet. These things shouldn't be forced onto kids. We're not responsible for the gun violence epidemic in America. It's time for the adults to be held accountable. That's why I must urge the City Council to pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
And what's your address?
Twenty-five, ten, South Seventy-fourth Street.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you might, as people come forward and they're waiting at the one mic, if they could sign in with everything, so it'll help our clerk in that regard, and then that way it facilitates everything.
Thank you. Please consider signing in while you're waiting for the... Thank you, Ms. Vaquero.
Thank you. My name is Melody Vaquero, and I live at four-four-zero-one, South Fifty-fourth Street, six-eight-five-one-six, and that's V-A-C-C-A-R-O. And I also serve as the Vice President of Nebraskins Against Gun Violence. Earlier this year, a kindergartner in Grand Island brought a handgun on the school bus. The police officer on the scene assured the local paper that parents were not to blame. The news story that I read ended by saying the child was referred for possible charges. Earlier this month, a teenager in Grand Island brought in a plastic gun and scared some other students with it. The school resource officer passed the teenager along to police for possible criminal charges. These stories give us evidence that times have changed for our young people in schools. When it comes to kids and guns, as the adults, we have zero tolerance for children who make bad choices. We're all worried about gun violence, and we all want the children in this community and in every community to come home safe from school every day. We don't want guns in our schools. We don't want young children accidentally shooting themselves or others in their homes or in the homes where they play. We don't want teenagers taking their own lives. Sadly, in Grand Island and all across Nebraska, including in Lincoln, children are bearing the penalty of our inability to respond to gun violence as adults. They are dying through accidental shootings and suicides, and their futures are being erased with criminal charges that may follow them the rest of their lives. It's time to call upon the people who ought to shoulder more responsibility. We are already asking too much from the kids. It's time to hold the adults in Lincoln to a higher standard. I'm asking you to bring forth an ordinance telling those who bring guns into our community to lock them up. When guns are locked up, children cannot get them. When guns are locked up, teenagers cannot use a gun in a suicide attempt that rarely offers a second chance at life. When guns are locked up, they can't be brought to school. As a community member and a mother, I'm asking for a safe stor, storage ordinance. As a member of the Unitarian Church of Lincoln, I'm asking on behalf of fifty-seven congregants for a safe storage ordinance, and I have their names for you here. I have a list from someone in the community that was unable to speak, and there are sixteen names there. And I am also here on behalf of Sarah Daughter Fur. She was a breastfeeding and child welfare advocate. She was a founding member of Nebraskins Against Gun Violence, who died earlier this year. She always hoped to see a safe storage law passed. She always thought this would be the most effective way to save the lives of children, and it always brought her the most pain. We hadn't been able to do that yet. And so, I, I hope that you hear us, and I hope that we can engage in this process after this, and that we can bring in ordinance forward, and that we can really do something that will actually save the lives of children right here in Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaquero, Councilman Christianson has a question for you.
Are you a firearms owner?
No, I'm not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, testifier. Next, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kim Alfregi. I live here in Lincoln at twenty-two, twenty-seven, South Tenth Street.
Would you spell your name, please?
A-L-F-R-E-J-I.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've lived here in Lincoln for eighteen years. My husband and I have two children that are currently in the Lincoln Public School system. I am here tonight to ask the Council to create an ordinance requiring the safe storage of firearms. I feel that this is an important issue for many reasons, but I would like to take a moment to focus on the issue of firearm theft. In the U.S., a gun is stolen every two minutes. Over two million have been reported stolen in the last decade. In two thousand and sixteen alone, over two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand guns were reported stolen. This is a sixty-eight percent increase since two thousand and five. These numbers don't even take into consideration the fact that many gun thefts are never even reported to the authorities. I have here a list. I can't get it to unroll completely. But this scroll is a list of guns that were reported stolen just here in Lancaster County in the last few years. Now, here in Lincoln, there have been eight-hundred-and-five guns reported stolen from January first to July second just this year. Nearly two hundred of them were reported stolen from vehicles. With the rate of gun theft increasing every year, we cannot afford to keep ignoring this problem. The fact is that unsecured weapons often end up in the hands of criminals. This problem is fueling violent crime in this country because stolen guns end up in illegal underground markets, and then they are sold or traded to other criminals. Private gun owners that leave their guns unsecured are easy targets for criminals that are looking for guns to steal. Law enforcement officials agree that the best way to secure a firearm to prevent theft or mishandling is in a locked case designed specifically for that purpose. A safe storage ordinance will help to decrease the amount of unsecured weapons in private homes and vehicles within our community. In the wake of gun violence, there is always grief, and along with that grief comes a lot of questions. Why does this keep happening? What can we do to help prevent this from happening again? And so often, the dialogue gets confusing, and people get angry and frustrated, and then they just end up feeling defeated. So many times, I hear people say, "This problem feels so big. We don't even know where to start to fix it." I believe this is where we start. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I am not a gun owner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hello. My name is Isabel Shesley. I live at fourteen, forty-five, South Twentieth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I am sixteen years old, and today I am speaking in support of the passing of a state, safe storage ordinance. There is evidence of a need for safe storage in Lincoln. In two thousand and eleven, the Millard South shooting took place. Robert Butler, Jr., acquired the gun he used to perpetrate the shooting by stealing it from his father's cabinet. He ultimately injured two, killed one, and then killed himself afterwards. Had his father's gun been safely stored and locked away, this shooting could have been prevented easily. While I tend to refrain from referring to the NRA as a source, even they say on NRAfamily.org that the safe storage solution will provide protection to prevent unauthorized persons from accessing firearms. Strong boxes and security cases are manufactured to prevent theft. They are also built in a way that allows quick access to defensive firearms for the owner. I attend Lincoln High School, and I feel that the status of this ordinance is very important to my safety at home, but especially at school. I deserve to feel safe going to school every morning. We need this safe storage ordinance to be put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Zuckerman, Z-U-C-K-E-R-M-A-N. I live at seventeen-twenty-nine K Street here in Lincoln, and I am also here in support of gun safe storage laws. I have never been a victim of gun violence, but I often live in fear of it, and I offer three stories tonight of that fear. The first is, like many high schoolers, I struggled with depression, and I remember sitting on my bedroom floor at age fifteen, going through the list of things in my parents' house that I could kill myself with. It was a really short list, and guns were not on it, and for that, I am forever thankful. Because I am here today as a college graduate, I was a public school teacher, I am now a Ph.D., and I work with public school administrators and do research. But lots of parents own guns, and as an educator working with children, I fear for those adolescents who have greater access to a firearm than they do to mental health care, and for all of the supports that help children overcome those hours of darkness that so many of us have had growing up. And in many of the communities in which I've done research, suicide by high school students is an alarming epidemic. Research has identified that suicide attempts by firearm, ninety percent fatal compared to ten percent for some of those other things on my list. If there had been a gun in my childhood home, I probably would not be here. Second, as a teacher, I feared school shootings. This was before Sandy Hook and Parkland, but I remember Columbine because I was a high school senior in nineteen ninety-nine. In my last teaching assignment, I had the very last classroom at the end of a sprawling school. It was so far back, it was in fact behind the fire doors. If something had happened, I was on my own with a broom full of special-needs kindergartners, nowhere to run, nowhere to hide. Guns used in school shootings are acquired at home. Safe storage would prevent children from killing their classmates and their teachers. Third, as a single woman, I make sure of asking every man I go on a date with where his firearm is, how it's stored. If it's not locked up, I'm not going out with him, because I don't want to be one of the nine hundred women who are murdered each year by an intimate partner. Stricter gun laws prevent domestic violence shootings, and even the safe storage of guns away from ammunition slows domestic violence and prevents murders. I want safe storage to be the norm in our community. I don't want to have to ask, and I don't want other women to have to ask. We should not have to live in fear of violence from our intimate partners, because living in fear all the time takes its toll on one's health and well-being, and that fear also infringes on our basic human rights. Amnesty International recently declared gun violence a public health problem in the United States, and it's also a crisis against our very rights to liberty. The executive director of Amnesty International said, "The ability to go about your daily life in security and dignity, free from fear, is the very cornerstone of human rights. No human's rights can be considered secure as long as our leaders fail to do anything about gun violence." So, I am here today to ask our community leaders to do something about that gun violence, and that is to pass Safe Storage Act here in Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me. Pardon me, Ms.
I have never felt the need to own a firearm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mo Neil. My address is on the sheet. I am here today to ask the Council to implement a strong safe storage law, one that would require all guns to be locked up when not in the direct control of their legal owner. This law just makes sense. It's not a two-A, it's not an NRA issue, though they would like to think it is. Murder-suicides are a common occurrence in domestic violence disputes. Police would be able to arrest abusers if the gun is in view when they are called. People like Queens, New York National Guard Staff Sergeant Reagan Smith might be alive. Just September twenty-first, three days ago, after four incidents caused to police, her killer broke in, grabbed a service weapon her policeman boyfriend had left unsecured in her apartment. The abuser then shot her in the head, wounded the cop boyfriend, and killed himself. Davonis Wilkinson, a twenty-five-year-old Lincoln mother of five kids, remains in critical condition after being shot in the head on September ninth. She will never be the same person. The alleged shooter and father of the kids will not be able to support them if convicted. My own parents loved to fight. I mean knock-down dragouts. Early on, I learned to call the cops before the blood started to fly. I could just not tell when or how fast it was going to escalate. Luckily, my dad was that rare Southerner who never had a gun, one of his good traits. If either of them had had the chance, one or the other would have used it. Both were abusers. The Giffords Law Center has estimated at least two-hundred-and-twenty-nine billion dollars every year in costs, including eight-point-six billion in direct expenses for emergency and medical care. Gun violence costs more than seven-hundred dollars per American every year, more than the total economic cost of obesity, and almost as much as the annual price tag for the entire Medicaid program. Half of these yearly costs are borne by U.S. taxpayers. This data is from the Giffords Law Center. I contacted Richard Myers, Major Cities Chief Association Executive Director, regarding safe storage laws and what recommendations the MCAA had to make. They are a police chiefs organization in sixty-nine major cities, including Omaha, and are dedicated to lowering gun violence. Rick had this to say on safe storage laws. "This is a classic example of common-sense legislation that increases the public safety. In Lincoln, through August seventeenth of two thousand and eighteen, we had ninety-eight stolen firearms. A few of those are probably magazines." A few of those are probably magazines, et cetera. Many were unsecured. Too many gun owners have proven they have no common sense and are not responsible. With the time it takes to get a gun out of a locked container, give a victim those few precious seconds to make a run for safety. Possibly, I would like to find out by having this law in place. Thank you. And yes, I have two guns, and they are secured."
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Judy King, J-U-D-Y-K-I-N-G, twelve sixty-one Falkland Road.
Thank you, Ms. King.
I'll start out to Mr. Christensen. I used to hunt. I grew up with guns. My family had guns. I have... My son-in-law, my grandson, everybody has guns. We keep them locked up.
And you do too.
Yes. I am scared to death to have them around kids. So we keep our guns locked up. Hidden, I mean hidden and locked up. Empty, but no gun is ever empty. I used to hunt. My boyfriend would pick me up after high, you know, after I got out of high school at night. We'd run out to the field and hunt. And I loved it until I actually shot something, and then I cried all the way home, and I never wanted to shoot again. But I like to shoot, and I always have. I'm only saying all of this because you asked, but also my grandfather shot himself when my mom was sixteen. And it was during the Depression, and left my mom and her brother to find him. He worked at a jewelry store. Not that that would have anything to do with having a gun locked up, but that's just some of my background. I've lived here in Lincoln for forty years, and I'm here today to ask the city council to create an ordinance requiring the safe storage of firearms. This is not about the Second Amendment rights or taking guns away. It's only about forcing those gun owners to be the responsible gun owners the NRA says they are. I raised four children, five grandchildren, who went and are attending public schools. Right now, at the beginning of each year, LPS sends home with the kids a list of guidelines for parents to read. Gun safety info is not included. Having a safe storage law would give LPS the incentive to include this in their instructions to parents. A safe storage law does not add more guns into the school, but it cuts down on easy access to guns in the home of kids at risk, kids with mental health issues, friends of kids at risk, et cetera. States with the strongest self, excuse me, with the strongest safe storage laws have seen the rates of teen suicide accidental in school shootings drop. This is a law whose time is now, and before another accident happens here in Lincoln, its time is now. And thank you for this opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Next testifier, please.
Hi, I'm Joeth Zucco, J-O-E-T-H-Z-U-C-C-O, twenty-three ten Ryan Street. I've lived in Lincoln on and off for about twenty years. I'm the mom of two daughters who just graduated from LPS. And I'm here to speak in favor of a safe storage ordinance. Safe storage will save lives and prevent tragic accidents. About forty years ago, my ex-husband's nephew was involved in a tragic accident. He was six or seven years old, and he and his little cousin were at their grandpa's house. They were playing, and they found their grandpa's loaded shotgun next to the front door. Eric picked up the gun, aimed it at his cousin, and pulled the trigger. The gun was loaded, and Eric killed his cousin. Please let that be enough to encourage you to support a safe storage ordinance for Lincoln. And no, I do not own a gun.
Thank you. Next testifier.
My name is Roger Doerr, sixteen thirty-seven South Eleventh Street. My name is spelled D-O-E-R-R. I'm here to, in support of the council creating an ordinance that would require the safe storage of firearms in the home. Answer your question. I'm a Nebraska kid, raised on a farm, grew up shooting guns, handguns, shotguns, rifles. As soon as I became a father, those guns out of the house. The statistics show, evidence shows, that they're more of a danger to people in the house than they are protecting, so. This is not something where I want to say, "I want to take your guns," because, you know, that's the first thing. I don't want anybody taking my guns. That's the first thing gun rights activists say. And quite the contrary, I don't want anybody to take your guns. I want you to keep your guns. I want you to keep your guns so safe and secure that nobody can touch them but you, a safe and responsible gun owner. Yeah, if you are a safe and responsible gun owner, that's part of being a space, is making sure nobody gets to them. It's just common sense. Somebody mentioned school shootings. Oftentimes, the guns come from in the home. If we can prevent Lincoln from being the next Sandy Hook, the next Columbine, the next Stoneman Douglas, or the thousands of others that listed, we don't want Lincoln to be synonymous with gun violence as those... Everybody thinks Columbine now. What do they think of? Gun violence? We don't want Lincoln to be that next statistic, and this could help prevent that. It's a simple thing. I'm here tonight because I have a daughter who asks me every time these shootings happen, sorry, why doesn't anybody do anything? Doesn't anybody care? And I don't have an answer for her. Do you? I don't know. I hopefully, next time a shooting happens, and it is going to happen again, it's become a fact of life at this point, hopefully I have an answer for her. Yes, somebody is doing something. So that's why I'm here, to ask you to create a safe storage law for Lincoln to save a life, hopefully lots of lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen's question?
It was answered.
Oh, it was. Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Ben Cruzey. I live at fourteen twenty-one South Twenty-sixth Street. I've lived in Nebraska all my life and in Lincoln for the last twenty-six years. And I'm here to speak in favor of an ordinance for safe storage laws in Lincoln. And I'm a gun owner, so this law would affect me, and I guess, you know, I'm bringing that up because angry gun owners can be scary, and maybe it's hard to go against what angry gun owners say, but I think most gun owners agree that locking up their firearms is a good idea. And I think particularly within a city. I'm talking to you guys as opposed to the state, you know, legislature, or the, you know, my congress, my federal congressman or whatever, because I think that this is the type of thing that's most appropriately enforced, you know, at a city level. A city has, you know, the more dense a population is, the more consequence the discharge of a firearm has. And so in a city, it really behooves us to make some extra laws to make sure that everybody can't just, you know, pull out a firearm and shoot it kind of willy-nilly. I don't have a safe for my gun right now. I do keep the clip separate. You know, some gun owners might say that's fine for you, Ben, but for me, I want to have a loaded gun nearby in case somebody runs into my home and attacks me. Or they might say that, you know, any law which allows, you know, which infringes on my right to own guns is too much for me. Or they might say maybe that the, you know, that the safes are too expensive or something. I'm trying to think of some arguments against it, I guess. I don't think any of those arguments are very good. I looked at the cost of a gun safe today before I came here today. I could get a simple one for, you know, fifty to a hundred dollars. If I really felt like I needed to access that gun, you know, at a moment's notice just to shoot someone without ever, without even thinking about it properly, then I could get a gun safe that I could have, I could have an RFID chip attached to a bracelet or onto my watch where I just wave my hand in front of that safe, and it'll pop out. And then, you know, like something out of Star Trek with the, with, you know, in the proper position and everything. A safe like that, it's, you know, no more uncomfortable lumps under your pillow. It's a good idea, I think, you know. And in terms of, you know, the idea that this is somehow infringing on people's rights, you know, I liked what other people said about it. It'll prevent people from stealing, you know, the guns. It'll prevent other people from the household from getting it. But, you know, what about my right not to get shot by my neighbor because they, you know, they decide to pull a gun off and shoot at something in the dark? We're living in a city. There's windows, you know, guns pass through windows and doors. We're all in danger of that. We, you know, we have to balance our gun rights with the rights of our neighbors to be safe. So I think this is a best as a city ordinance. That's why I'm here talking to you people. I think you have a lot of power to save lives here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Yes, my name is Emily Killam, K-I-L-L-H-A-M. I live at nine five zero one Oakville Road here in Lincoln. And I'm here as a community member and as a parent today. You know, one of the things as parents that we do is we listen to organizations who know things about how to keep kids safe. And the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics comes out with car seat regulations, and then our state and local governments pass ordinances that say kids must be secured in a certain way in the backseat of a car. They need to be a certain age and a certain weight limit to ride in the front seat of a car. The American Academy of Pediatrics comes out with statements about access to narcotics and to alcohol. And we make laws and hold people responsible for having unsecured alcohol in the home. If a child comes to my home and accesses alcohol and goes out and drives a car or hurts someone, that can come back on me as a responsible owner of choosing to bring liquor into my home. Well, the American Academy of Pediatrics has a statement on gun violence, and it says, "The absence of guns from children's homes and communities is the most reliable and effective measure to prevent firearm-related injuries in children and adolescents." Okay, that's the first thing. Now, we're not saying don't have any guns, but the second one says adolescent suicide risk is strongly associated with firearm availability. Safe gun storage, guns unloaded and locked, ammunition locked separately, reduces children's risks of injury. So now that's what the board that is in charge of children's safety for the country is saying. They're the ones who put out those statements, and they're saying safe gun storage unlocked, unloaded, and ammunition locked separately reduces children's risk of injury. Now, it goes on to say that, in fact, they've done studies that say we should educate children on if you see a gun, don't touch it. If you see a gun, don't pick it up. And what they've found is that, in fact, those education is not helpful. And so in our schools, we're asking our kids to, if you see something, say something. We're teaching kids how to duck and cover and run and hide and be quiet in a corner. But those things are not, have not been shown to be effective in preventing children from accessing weapons. What has been shown to be effective is advising pediatricians and other people in charge of, that have contact with parents to, in fact, advocate for gun safe storage, with or without an ordinance. And they have done studies that have shown that, in fact, when you go to your pediatrician, and I've been to mine in the last year, who asks the question, "Do you have firearms in the home?" The answer is no. But then the second question is, if you have firearms, are they properly stored? Are they safely stored? And in fact, those education pieces have been effective in reducing kids' access to weapons. I have some alarming statistics, at least for me, you know, when you look at it, that says eighty percent of teen suicides receive the, or locate the gun from a family member. The Journal of American Medical Association says one-third of teens live with a gun. Forty-one percent of those teens report having easy access to access and shoot the weapon. This is frightening when you think about, kids know where the hiding place is, right? Kids know where the presents are hidden, and they know where the firearms are hidden. They need to be locked. One example of a state that has access, that has passed a safe storage ordinance
One minute.
is Massachusetts. When you look at teen suicide rate nationally, thirty-nine percent of teen suicides nationally are completed with the use of a firearm. In Massachusetts, they have strict safe storage ordinances that say your weapon needs to be locked when it's not on your person so that no one who doesn't have access can have them. In Massachusetts, only nine percent of youth suicides are completed by firearm. So that's a pretty vast difference, but if we could stop, you know, they say with a car seat law, if we can stop just one, it's worth it to put that inconvenience on parents and to say, "Purchase an expensive car seat. Purchase a car seat that has the right weight limit." Same with a gun safe. If you choose to own a weapon, choose to lock it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to...? Okay. Yes, next testifier, please.
Thank you for taking comments. My name is Laura Carpenter Yanike, and Yanike is J-A-N-I-K-E. I've lived in Lincoln for about twenty years total, and we've lived in two different neighborhoods, and I really appreciate when council members have come out to our neighborhood meetings. And I hope that you'll be as receptive to all this tonight. I'm here tonight to ask the council to create an ordinance requiring safe storage of firearms. I support the creation of this ordinance because I believe it's part of responsible gun ownership, and I think you've heard over and over tonight, it keeps people safe, and I think lives are important. It's a sensible approach to only providing access to firearms to those who are legally allowed and capable of that level of responsibility, or at least it would rest on that premise. I grew up in a home with guns for sport and hunting, and I benefited from that with really delicious duck and deer sometimes. But they were always locked, and guns were always separated from ammunition, and it was very known and clear. And it was never complained about that that was inconvenient. It was just how you are a responsible gun owner. I think it's a step in the right direction and a safe direction to codify safe storage in Lincoln. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I do not, I do not own any guns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier.
Hi, my name is Patricia Wonch Hill. It's spelled W-O-N-C-H and then H-I-L-L. I live at fourteen twenty-one South Twenty-sixth Street. I'm a native Nebraskan. I grew up hunting and fishing with my dad in North Pot, Nebraska, and I've lived here in Lincoln for about twenty years. My whole family owns guns, and we lock them up. We store them safely. It's a no-brainer. Unfortunately, not everyone safely stores their guns. I think we need a safe storage ordinance in Lincoln, Nebraska, to keep guns out of the hands of kids, to keep guns out of the hands of dangerous people, and to keep guns out of the hands of even elderly people who maybe are becoming more demented or having issues related to that. So I have three kids in school. I have one in college, one in high school, and one in middle school. I should not have to be afraid every day to send my kid to school or over to a friend's house because irresponsible gun owners leave their firearms easily accessible to children and teens. If you can afford to invest in and/or stockpile guns, then you can afford a gun safe. A study published last year in the Journal of Pediatrics showed that approximately six thousand children are injured every year in the US by guns. No other country comes close to this. More than that, twelve hundred children die annually from gun-related injuries, making guns the third-leading cause of death for children in America after car accidents and drowning. I own a swimming pool, and it is my responsibility as an owner of a swimming pool to make sure that children don't drown in that swimming pool. I have to have locks and gates, and that's my responsibility. If I can own a swimming pool, then I can make sure it's safe. And that's all we're asking gun owners to do, is to take responsibility. If they leave their guns accessible to kids, and one of those kids uses it to shoot themselves, shoot their girlfriend, shoot up a school, then the adult gun owner is negligent and bears the blame. We can no longer put the responsibility of any gun violence on the backs of our children. Children should need to have bulletproof backpacks or have active shooter drills until adults take responsibility. When a four-year-old, so I often hear that, you know, guns don't kill people. People kill people. When a four-year-old shoots an infant, it's the guns. So I just don't believe that. A city ordinance that requires adults safely store their guns will result in families all over Lincoln having necessary conversations about how everyone stores their guns. Are there guns where your kids play? How do you know? In Lincoln, more guns will be stored safely if a safe storage ordinance is passed, and lives will be saved. And yes, I own guns.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Schaffert, S-C-H-A-F-F-A-R-T. My address is eleven twenty-five South one hundred and third Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one eight. I am, in light of my personal experience, I am very grateful for the opportunity to testify this evening in support of a safe storage ordinance. On the afternoon of December fifth, two thousand and seven, my wife and I were shopping at the Von Mar Department Store in Omaha, Nebraska, when a mentally disturbed young man opened fire with an AK-47 that one of his parents was irresponsibly storing in an unlocked closet. Eight innocent victims were shot and killed, and two other innocent victims were shot and critically wounded that afternoon in the senseless Von Mar tragedy. I personally was shot in the left arm and hand, but somehow... I personally was shot in the left arm and hand, but somehow escaped having suffered relatively minor physical injuries. My doctors told me at the time that the bullet that tore through the inside of my left upper, upper arm missed my brachial artery by approximately a centimeter and that I am extremely fortunate to be alive. In the wake of the Von Mar massacre and the ongoing gun violence epidemic that is afflicting our country, state, and local communities, the need for common sense gun safety measures could not be clearer. I believe that a states, that a safe storage ordinance represents a sensible gun safety measure that would save lives, and I urge the council to support it. If a safe storage measure was in place in two thousand and seven in the Omaha and Belleville area, it's very possible that the Von Mar tragedy may have been averted and this murderer would not have been able to just grab a AK forty-seven from a closet and, uh, and kill, you know, eight people. A safe storage ordinance would in no way infringe upon the rights of responsible, law-abiding gun owners. I believe a safe, a safe sort, storage ordinance, if adopted, would reduce mass shootings like the Von Mar massacre and school shootings, reduce youth suicide, reduce accidental shootings, reduce gun theft, reduce gun theft, and help define what responsible ownership means in the law. You can own what you want, but you have to keep it and keep it safe and keep it away from, uh, children and people that, you know, have no business having firearms. And finally, it would place responsibility where it belongs. For these and other reasons, I again urge the council to vote for a safe storage ordinance. Lives depend on it. Thank you again for providing me the opportunity to testify about this important ordinance. And no, I do not have any firearms in my home.
Thank you, Mr. Schaffert.
Okay. Name is Dan Thorne.
Please, please, look, cutting in there, bounces testimony time.
Name is Dan Thorne, T.H.O.R.N.A., live at twenty-five twenty-one South Seventy-seventh Place here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I've been here for about forty years, and I've been around firearms my whole life. Um, uh, like most firearm, responsible firearm owners, I do keep my firearms safe in my house, but as I've raised my kids and raised my grandkids, what that safety looks like has changed over time depending upon who is living in my house and who's in my, my, my place. Um, I'm kind of bucking the trend here a little bit. I don't think we need a city ordinance that gets that kind of detail that prescribes, "Hell, I have to keep my firearms safe in my house." I keep my firearms safe, um, like most kids, responsible gun owners do. Yes, I do own firearms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Dave Kendall. I'm a-
Please, please, everybody, come on. Let's be a little bit more professional and respectful, and please, continue.
I'm a fourth-generation Lincolnite. Uh, I have kids who are the fifth-generation Lincolnites and grandkids who are sixth-generation Lincolnites. Uh, live at twenty-five thirty-two Southwest Sixteenth Street presently.
Your name, sir?
Dave Kendall.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and council members, our country's founders understood human nature. They knew there are, always have been, and always will be, those who seek to rule us, who believe they know what's good for us better than we know for ourselves. Some of them have good intentions, some don't, but they do intend to rule us. The founders wrote the Constitution because they understood that a government composed of such people must be restrained if the country is to remain free. Government intrusion into our private homes with the kind of proposal we have before us today is the very kind of thing the founders intended to restrain. There will be those who argue that this is a matter of public safety, and we've heard it all along here. It is not, but public safety will always be the siren's call of those who seek to rule us. The call to public safety can be used to argue for any restriction of liberty that one could imagine. For instance, obesity is a leading cause of death and disease in Lincoln if the CDC is to be believed. The cost of obesity to, to American society is a hundred and ninety billion dollars a year, most of which is not borne by the obese, and it results in well over three hundred thousand premature deaths every year. If public safety were truly, were truly of concern to the Lincoln City Council, we would be here to discuss limitations on what people could eat or how much they would have to exercise and figure out ways to force them to do these things. I think most people would recognize that such a, such a measure would be intrusive and just like the one that we have before us here today. As Ben Franklin said, "Those who would give up essential liberty for a small measure of temporary safety deserve neither safety nor liberty." And I would argue that this country and this town are well on the way to having neither. There also have been some who have argued that this measure will somehow relieve them of their parental responsibility to vet where and with whom their children play.
One minute.
It will not. Not any more than giving pedestrians the right of way relieves parents the responsibility of teaching their kids to look both ways before they cross the street. No, the reality is the supporters of this measure are not here to promote public safety. They are here simply because they are opposed to a free and armed citizenry with the right to self-defense. One need only read their, many of their abundant public statements on the subject to know this to be true, and they view this measure as a way to win an easy restriction on the exercise of those rights. In the end, we are left with just another unenforceable feel-good measure to placate those who oppose the private ownership of firearms, who oppose the right to self-defense, and who believe only a government composed of people like themselves should have access to the force of arms. And we find, and finally, we're left with an overreaching attempt to restrict, restrict the rights of a free people within their own private homes and within their own private lives. A city leadership devoted to protecting the rights of a free people, which is the primary responsibility of every elected official in this country-
Mr. Kendall, wrap it up.
...would reject this measure out of hand. I would like to propose an ordinance of my own, and that is, I would like to propose-
Mr. Kendall, I'm, I'm sorry, it's for the sake of all the other testifiers, I'm going to ask you to, to share that with us at another time.
Thank you.
Mr. Christensen has a question.
I'd rather not say. Okay.
Mr. Kendall, did, did you say you're a gun owner?
I said I would rather not say.
Okay, thank you. I did.
Thank you, sir.
I did bring some extra testimony for you to hand out. My name is Amy.
Amy, would you, Teresa, did you hear what she said?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
My name is Amy Weimer, and I thank you guys so much for listening to me today and giving me this opportunity to speak to you. I am here to advocate for one person who represents a large number of people, but they have no advocate, and that is domestically abused women who leave their partner. And I knew a woman very personally, this is a very personal story to me. I went to protect the young woman's identity while still sharing her story. She had been in an abusive marriage for years and finally got the courage to remove herself and their children from it. She did not own a gun, so she decided to move in my father's house because he owns several firearms, and we knew that he, he could protect her. Her husband stalked her for days trying to get to her, but coming to the conclusion that because my father's house would be impossible to force his way into, he did not attempt it at that time. In fact, my father had weapons that were not locked up, and I was brought up with weapons that were not locked up, and I knew exactly where they were and exactly how to handle all of them in case we had an intruder. This young woman and her children lived in fear day and night of this man, so intent on hurting them for lea- for leaving him. Eventually, he concocted a plan of murder-suicide and sent pleading texts to her throughout the day. Fortunately, she showed my dad the texts, and he made the decision to go there instead of her. The man's plan completely fell apart because of this, and fortunately for all of us, he made the decision to carry out this, the suicide part of his plan in a hideous way that affected his entire neighborhood. This did not involve a firearm. Keeping guns locked away keeps their main purpose locked away. Think of how many women who need protection but still want to be a good citizen of this city will be impacted. Their weapons will be not readily accessible. They will have to spend hundreds of dollars to be a good citizen and face fines or jail time if they make a mistake. If an individual is facing jail time, if they report a lost or stolen gun, they will just not report it. There are many repercussions to a regulation like this, many of which we won't even know until after it's passed. I often ask myself, "Why does anyone feel the need to make choices for anyone else?" Isabel Patterson reminds us that most of the harm in the world is done by good people and not by accident lapse or omission. It is the result of their deliberate actions, long persevered in, which they hold to be motivated by high ideals towards virtuous ends. This action harms people in the name of good intentions, and anytime you have regulation based on good intentions, you should ask yourself, "How much power over one other individual's life should you have? How much power over two hundred fifty thousand lives should you have?" If your answer is anything except none, you are no longer a public servant but a lord over serfs. I implore each of you not to fall into the trap if it just saves one life. Feminist Suzanne LaFollette felt that no human being, man, woman, or child, may safely be entrusted to the power of another, for no human may, no human being may safely be trusted with absolute power. This proposal is anti-feminist, it is anti-woman, and it is an anti-individual. I leave you with one last thought by Huxley. Hell isn't merely paved with good intentions, it's walled and roofed with them, yes, and furnished too. Any questions? I do not own a gun because I'm too poor to, but I would love to.
Amy, what's your address?
Four thirty-six South Twenty-Ninth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hello, thank you for hearing us all today. Um, I'm glad the Lincoln City Council is thinking about this issue and listening to its constituents. My name is Kelly Stage. I live in Northwest Lincoln. Mr. Eskridge is my representative, um, and, uh, my address is four nine two one Northwest Fairway Drive. I, uh, really think this issue should be non-controversial, but everyone, uh, is, is, uh, entitled to testify as they wish. Um, the phrase "responsible gun owner" to me seems synonymous, as others have agreed with the idea of locking up your guns and keeping them safe, keeping ammunition away from them, and there's lots of ways to do that. Um, so I really don't understand how this is controversial in many ways, but people will have their own opinions, as I said. Um, this is an important way, uh, gun storage, this proposal, having safe gun storage in this city, um, for helping our city, but it also, uh, helps other communities. Um, we've already had people testify that over eight hundred guns had been reported stolen in the first half of twenty eighteen in Lincoln. The vast majority of those, um, uh, from homes and over two hundred of them from unsecured vehicles. I would urge that if this idea is considered, that people think about vehicle, uh, storage as well. Um, but the main point here is that by having safe storage laws, we can also lessen the circulation of guns, uh, that become illegal in other communities and not just ours. Research for the twenty-fourteen thesis in geography from a UNL, uh, student suggested that a significant number of firearms stolen in Lincoln's residential neighborhoods found their way all the way to Phoenix, Arizona. Having lax policy here is doesn't, not only hurt us. Earlier this summer, uh, in a story in the Omaha World-Herald, a man in Omaha, whose five hundred dollar handgun had been stolen from his unsecured pickup truck cited and did not want to be named in this article, quote, "I would feel better if they had walked into my house and taken the five hundred dollars that was lying around. I would feel so much better if I didn't know that there was someone walking around with a gun that shouldn't have it," unquote. So the consequences here are something that, you know, become rather immediate when one has this, uh, happen to them. Um, other concerns about suicide and young people have already also been brought up, but I'll state just again for the record. Uh, the Harvard School for Public Health shows it boldly and clearly on their webpage, quote, "Twelve or more U.S. can, case control studies have compared individuals who died by suicide with those who did not and found that dying by suicide were more likely to live in homes with guns," unquote. It's a simple, across-the-board fact. Um, research has found, this was reported in the Journal of Pediatrics in February twenty eighteen-
One minute.
...children in households that were, had a high history of self-harm or risk factors for it, and their parents owned guns, did not necessarily have a more statistic likelihood that those parents would lock up those guns. Passing a safe storage ordinance would help families eliminate the question of, "Is my child going to do this?" And just say, "Well, if I have a gun, I should lock it up. Let's make it easy." That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you, Mr. Christensen has a question?
Do not own a gun.
Thank you.
Next testifier, please.
Hi, I have a question for Mr. Christensen. Why is it important whether we own a gun or not?
I'm just curious as to how the, how it breaks down.
Okay.
Who's advocating for what?
Okay. Um, just wondered. All right. My name is Vicki Wood. My address is forty-two forty Starr Street, S.T.A.R.R. Um, I'm a longtime Lincoln resident. A year ago on a fall day much like this one, my friend's seventeen-year-old daughter heard a ping on her phone and noticed a text from her boyfriend wishing her a good day. Later that morning, she received a text from her mom telling her that her boyfriend had been in an accident. Shortly after that, she learned that he was dead from a self-inflicted gunshot wound. His brother found him dead in his bedroom fifteen minutes after he sent the good-day text. In the aftermath, her mother learned that there were several unlocked guns in the home that had four adolescents and young adults living there. Her daughter said that she had noticed them in the basement when they played board games there in full view of everyone in the room. An unlocked weapon is a perfect tool for destruction. It can be used instantly with little or no premeditation. What may have been some disturbing news or a bad day devolves into a waking nightmare for those in concentric circles outside the shots that were fired that morning. Imagine the impact on the son who came upon his dead brother, the other siblings, the parents, and the friends and the families. Imagine the trauma. These young people will carry that trauma throughout their lives, and it will cover everything they experience as they grow into adults. Safe storage gives young people the time, the time they need to grow, mature, cool off, and gain perspective, time to become adults free from trauma. All of our children deserve these basic rights. Let's give them the time and opportunity to grow up protected and untraumatized. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do not own a gun.
Next testifier, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lauren Williams, and I'm here to testify on behalf of Planned Parenthood in Nebraska. We support an ordinance that requires gun owners in Lincoln to be responsible, to lock up their guns safely when they are not in direct control. Because this ordinance does not restrict gun ownership, we believe it is an important community safety measure that everyone can and should get behind. Gun violence is so pervasive in America because of its deep roots in toxic masculinity, white supremacy, transphobia, and queer phobia. The lives of women, LGBTQ folks, people of color, indigenous people, people with disabilities, and children are all disproportionately impacted by gun violence. This is a common sense request that benefits the community and is a step towards reducing gun violence, accidental shootings and deaths, and teen suicide. You've already heard tonight that guns in the home are a major risk for youth suicide. Requiring adults to keep their guns locked will help reduce this risk. But what I would like to speak on is the impact firearms have on women. Firearms are a women's health issue and a reproductive health issue. Gun violence disproportionately affects women, and intimate partner violence is exacerbated when guns are involved. American women are particularly vulnerable to certain forms of gun violence, including homicides by domestic abusers and stalkers. Abused women are five times more likely to be killed if their abuser, uh, owns a firearm, and domestic violence assaults involving a gun are twelve times more likely to end in death than assaults with other weapons or physical harm. Moreover, based on the latest information on gun violence from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Nebraska ranked fortieth out of fifty states in firearm deaths per a hundred thousand people. In two thousand sixteen, Nebraska had nine point one deaths per a hundred thousand people. We are under no illusion that there will be at a time when there are no gun deaths in Nebraska, but let's do what we can to significantly reduce that number. Let's aspire to be more like Massachusetts, which has the lowest rate at three point four deaths per a hundred thousand people. This ordinance would be a great place to start, and I encourage you to support it. Thank you. I know I do not own a gun.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
My name is Donald D. Harms Jones, H.A.R.M.S hyphen J.O.N.E.S. I live at twenty-seven forty-four Garfield here in Lincoln, Nebraska. On October twelfth, two thousand nine, my parents were found shot to death in our longtime Lincoln home. I was not there, but I saw the blood in the brains. The whole story is on the Facebook page called "Nebraska Needs Estate Law Reform," and I would urge people to go there to see how badly this state treats survivors like myself. It's not good. I would just like to say that that house had a number of guns in it. All of the guns in that house were locked up except for one. It was a thirty-two caliber revolver, and that's the way it was used in the shootings. Please pass this so other people won't have to go through the hell this state has put me through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harms Jones.
No gun. I used to, but not anymore.
Next testifier, please.[1771.65]
Hi, my name's Christina Brantner. I'm losing my voice a little bit because I've been teaching all day. So Brantner is B-R-A-N-T-N-E-R, and I live on 1700 Pawnee Street. I've lived in Lincoln for over 30 years. I've had one son in public schools, and I have a second one who still is in public schools. I'm here tonight to ask you, the city council, to create an ordinance requiring the safe storage of firearms. I support such an ordinance because it is the only thing to do. My country of origin is Germany. To our south, we have Switzerland, one of the favorite countries the NRA likes to compare to. And I think if you research that, you will find that they have some of the strictest gun storage laws on the books after just one incident that was deemed too much in 2006. And from then on, they have restricted that bullets are kept in a central ammunition arsenal. Guns need to be stored in such a way that, for example, the barrel is in a separate location, just as an example of how one country reacted to one bad incident in 2006. So since that is always the country of favorite comparison for the NRA, I thought that might be something some other people might want to research. Thank you for your time. I hope you ponder it and you hear what you've heard. Thank you very much. And I'm not answering your question because I think it colors your thinking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next testifier.
My name is Sheila Draper, D-R-A-P-E-R. I'm from 511 South 65th here in Lincoln. And as a child, I grew up in a military family. My father served 30 years, and in my early childhood, all of my friends' fathers were in the military. They served in World War II. They were combat-trained. They knew guns. They knew how to handle them, shoot them, and care for them. And one day, a group of military families went out to dinner. The children sat at one table, and the adults sat at another. And one father had bought a new gun that morning, and he took it out to show it off. He pointed the gun towards the table of children and pulled the trigger. He did not realize that the gun was loaded, and the bullet went into a post directly above my head. I've told this story before, and what I hear back is that the gun owner was careless and irresponsible. And I agree, yes, he was. And that is the point. People are often careless and irresponsible with guns. I support the Second Amendment. I know that we have the right to keep and bear arms, but with every right comes an even greater responsibility, and that is why I am here. I have the right to demand that gun owners not be careless with their guns and to be responsible citizens and keep their guns locked up. I'm here to support a safe gun storage ordinance in Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Draper?
Yes, we have guns, and they're locked up.
My name is Byron Millison. I live at 3146 Apple Street here in Lincoln. I've been here in Lincoln about 12, almost 12 years now. I am, like one person said, going to buck the trend because I believe that safe storage is a personal decision. It should be a personal decision. It should be a personal solution. It should not be mandated by government. We do not need more nanny-state regulations that only serve to harm the citizens, law-abiding citizens. I am a concealed carry license holder. I have places in Lincoln I am not permitted to carry. As a law-abiding citizen, I obey that. Criminals do not. Criminals do not obey the law. There is not one law written that is going to affect a criminal. All this is going to do is put extra regulations, onerous regulations, on us, the citizens. So I am against any form of safe storage mandate because we don't need it. What we need is education. A few people have vilified the NRA, and I'm not here to try to defend the NRA, but they do have children educational programs. They have, I mean, that's what they are. They are an educational institution. And they have, sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a second. Yeah, the thing is, this is not, some people said, well, it's not a Second Amendment issue. Well, it is a freedom issue. I should have the freedom to store them what best works for me. It is a personal decision. It is a personal solution, and there should not be a mandate from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do.
Next testifier, please. Thank you.
My name is Sylvia Betta Cole, S-I-L-V-I-A-B-E-T-T-A-C-O-L-E. I live at 5726 Walker Avenue in northeast Lincoln, and I have been a Lincoln resident since 2001, and a naturalized citizen and a registered voter since 2010, and I am here adding my voice to support the safe storage measure today. Primarily, I do support that as a parent. I have four children, and they are growing older and independent. I have two young adults, children, 18 and 19. One, earlier, we helped move into college, and my oldest son is in the military. And then I have a fifth grader and a 15-year-old freshman in high school. And so in thinking particularly my youngest children who are growing into the teen years, and I think about my responsibility as a parent to keep them safe, and I think about how relatively easy that was when they were younger, and we were controlling what they ate, and pretty much a lot of their day and routine, and how now, as they grow older, they are pretty much out and about, they want to be with their friends, they are making their choices. And again, as parents, we do our best to instill responsibility in them and to help them make good choices, and as well as we try our best to connect to the people that they connect to, and maybe to know who their parents are, and just go as far as we can to make them safe. And then I still, as a parent, I worry, and I still worry about this, as they become independent, and I cannot control their safety all the way. And I believe that this safe storage measure would give me, as a parent, a little bit more peace of mind as my children grow older. And I do want to also say that I am here as a family, as a household, representing my husband, who is not here, not because he doesn't agree with me, but because of work schedule. As a household, we do own guns, and we do believe that we are responsible, and we have a gun safe, and we keep them locked. And I just feel that every other gun owner should also have the same responsibility. And with that, I do feel that a measure from the city would help enforce that. I do feel that as a responsibility, there should be some accountability that goes with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next testifier.
Yes, my name is David F. Wiegand. And councilman, I do own firearms, and I have a gun safe. But I'm not going to give my address because I believe there's a very real possibility that we have active terrorists among us in this congregation, you might say, and I don't want to put out an address to be a target of a thief, all right? I do have some prepared statements. During my Navy career, I learned quite a bit about people and their approach to problem resolution. And the problem resolution generally results from using logic and reason and not emotion to determine how your course of action to resolve a problem. I learned that there are basically two types of people, those whose general approach is to offer destructive solutions, and those whose approach is to promote constructive solutions. Those who promote destructive solutions generally promote actions that obligate people in various ways and completely ignore those whose behavior needs to be corrected. The destructive solution group completely misses the correct target for corrective action. And such is the case here. If you are considering obligating all firearms owners to purchase gun safes to safely store firearms in order to control the bad behavior of a very small minority of the population, do you really want to mandate broad actions in order to attempt to control the behavior of a few? How about instead directly targeting the behavior of those who do bad actions? I read of a U.S. DOJ study that concluded that rural young people irresponsibly use firearms less than urban young people because rural young people were more familiar with firearms. The solution is education. And I heard one speaker say, oh, no, we can't train them. I learned how to use a firearm at five years old of age back in Texas. Teach young people the safe handling of firearms, and when it is morally and legally justified to use a firearm. Teach young people better control of their own behavior with firearms and increase their responsibility thereby. Education is the solution. I propose that instead of a gun storage ordinance, pass a resolution that recommends that young people receive appropriate education about the safety aspects and ethical and legal use of firearms. A resolution, not an ordinance. The Game and Parks Commission is a well-equipped firearms and archery facility right here in Lincoln. There are several government and privately-promoted shotgun competition events-
One minute.
-across the state. Thank you. In addition, there are at least three firearms facilities in the Lincoln area where firearms safety training can also be obtained. Is enhanced public safety your real goal? Is it your real goal, or is it a hidden agenda here? Let's target the correct population for corrective action here with common sense and wise constructive solutions that will actually achieve the goal of enhanced public safety. I call for a resolution to educate young people and firearms, not an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Next testifier, please.
Hello, my name is Robert Way, R-O-B-E-R-T-W-A-Y. I live at 801 Elavato Avenue, and I'm here to, I'll address a couple things because they're going to come up later. I own guns. Actually, I like guns. I have three guns, one of them being a Bushmaster series, which a lot of people don't like, but I really like guns. That being said, I was in the Army, and every time you're on an Army installation and you're not about to shoot that weapon, you clear that weapon. Then when you're not going to go on training for that weapon, you put it in a gun safe. You don't just walk around every day with weapons, because weapons are a lot, if used properly, can be very useful tools. Used improperly, a lot of bad things can happen. Even the Army has a lot of problems with something they used to call accidental discharges, but they changed that to negligent discharges. I was fortunate enough to use a weapon when I was in Iraq for over 300 missions outside the wire, and every time, even though I'm in a country where I war in, when I get back on the fob, I clear and save my weapon. When I was on post, I never didn't have my weapon, and when I was on post with my personal weapon, I had to keep it locked and safe, and the ammo separate. It's been the standard practice on military bases for years. Why? Because military bases understands, they've been around weapons, they know what works. You keep it locked, you keep it safe. Now, I'm going to use a couple seconds to address a couple things that fellow testifiers have made. There's some idea that weapons will keep you safe if the government wants to get you. One of the other experiences I had in the military was I was in tanks, and unless these gentlemen get tanks, their sidearms are not going to keep them safe. So we need to look at what we really want, like the last testifier said, and I would like to not see any more kids getting shot. Adults getting shot makes me kind of sad. Kids getting shot, it happens. What brought me hoping that we'd have this resolution was the shooting down in Texas. The shooting down in Texas was a kid who wasn't a criminal. He wasn't a criminal. He wasn't one of these hardened people that we're always talking about. He was a kid. For some reason, he decided to be really, really stupid one day, and there was a gun in the house, and then there were a bunch of dead kids. I'm not trying to solve the world's problems here. I don't think I can. I'm just saying, if you can just add that second, if you can just have that minute, where you don't, where something which can be very, very good or very, very bad has just that one more second, not to be bad, what's that worth? Well, I'll be for the council to decide, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Trevor Riley, T-R-E-V-O-R-R-E-I-L-L-Y. I live at 2532 T Street, and I stand before you tonight in opposition to the suggested ordinance of implementing safe storage in Lincoln. I am testifying on behalf of my experience as a Marine, where in addition to my duties as a radio operator and a joint fires observer, I was also a certified range coach and taught the fundamentals of pistol and rifle marksmanship to no less than 100 Marines spawning three separate range qualification periods. I'm in opposition to the suggested policy of safe storage of guns on the grounds that it is simply bad policy. I believe it ignores the root cause of teenage suicide, instead seeks to put the blame on one of the tools used by them to accomplish that horrific intended outcome. I see people before us getting hung up on the tool because they want something easy to blame. They want an easy solution, and there is no one easy solution. What this policy would look like is a lawsuit against the city waiting to happen. A safe storage requirement would likely resemble the case as in D.C. versus Heller when portions of the Firearms Control Regulations Act of 1975 were repealed, which included trigger locks on an individual's rifles and shotguns. If we had examined safes and other second-door security measures, then we'd be looking at the mandatory storage of any weapon in a small lockbox, which I have before you, a secured cage, or a heavy-duty safe. These are all faulty methods of deterring from the stated goal of the proponents before us. Lockboxes are a small obstacle to one with a crowbar, and a pair of bolt cutters can easily get near a cage, neither of which are unobtainable to a Nebraskan youth with a knowledge of Amazon or who can find their local hardware store. Mandating a large gun safe, then, would seem to imply a financial threshold of at least $300 for a low-quality steel container, which would still be susceptible to the aforementioned crowbar. A larger and more sturdy safe would reach approximately $1,200 to meet the minimum measures of fireproofing and hardened theft prevention. All these options seem to place an extremely higher need on the individual than is necessary when we already have policies in place establishing responsible ownership. The state of Nebraska requires all individuals who want to purchase a handgun to first acquire their handgun purchase permit at the cost of $5, where a background check is done on them at their local police or sheriff's office. If an individual wishes to carry their arms further, then it is at least $200 to include the Nebraska concealed carry course, the administrative fee from the Nebraska State Patrol, and a decent holster where your weapon does not print into your clothing. Second, let's consider the enforcement of such policy. What should have been done to the worker who left his firearm in his backpack on July 20th, 2018, as the proponents would ask? Let's fine him. But what would you do if the man returned to Iowa and did not pay his fine? Well, if you sign for the citation, you make a promise to appear before a local court and take care of your fine. If you fail to take care of the ticket, the local judge can issue a warrant for your arrest under the failure to appear. If the action involves enforcement by a police officer, it is usually a criminal offense which can eventually result in an arrest, and thus, we in Nebraska have manufactured a criminal.
One minute.
If Lincoln was looking to foster safety, we would not be contributing to the overpopulation crisis in our prisons by making more criminals for them. To suggest this policy that places another fiscal burden on both the already responsible gun owner and the taxpayer who would then jail them implies that the individual right to bear arms must be directly linked to your class. I would instead ask for a different policy. Mine begins at the four weapons safety rules. Treat every weapon as if it were loaded. Never point a weapon at anything you do not intend to destroy. Keep your weapon on safe until you are ready to fire, and keep your fingers straightened off the trigger until you intend to fire. I believe treating these words as gospel to firearm safety is the first step, and how it suggests that if Nebraskans are truly against gun violence, then we would analyze the policy of allowing our teachers with their concealed carry weapons permits to be permitted to carry on the grounds where they work, so that even in the most egregious worst-case scenario, they may be permitted to stop a public suicide from evolving into a mass shooting. Thank you for your time, and I will ask her any questions you have for me. I do own a firearm.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is April Jorgensen, J-O-R-G-E-N-S-E-N. I decline to give my address here, but I have written it for you for later.
Thank you.
I just came across a study yesterday from the British Campaign for Gun Violence, and it says here that eight children a day are unintentionally injured or killed by a gun in this country. Eight a day. Four million 600 children live in a home with an unlocked loaded gun. 75% of children know where firearms are kept in their house. I am a school librarian by trade, and it is facts like these that make me alarmed. I'm not worried about opinions. I'm worried about facts. I'm not worried about opinions, I'm worried about facts and safety. I work in a school every day and we ask them to be the eyes and ears of their peers. We ask them to practice lockdown drills, which are scary at best. I cannot explain what it's like to experience a lockdown drill in today's reality. I encourage each of you to attend one and see what it's like. There's a certain amount of detachment you have to put yourself through just to practice. But sometimes the student asks a question or just the full weight of the situation hits you. And every time a new school shooting is in the news, it is nothing less of traumatic for those of us who have to think about that possibility again and again and again. And yet, we ask nothing of the adults in our communities. This is unacceptable. We must demand better of the adults who are supposed to be raising the next generation because the safety of all of us demands it. In regards to domestic violence, I have a study from two thousand and seventeen from the Violence Policy Center using two thousand and fifteen data, which is the most recent year available, on female homicide victims. The study found there were three hundred and twenty-eight, uh, justifiable homicides committed by private citizens that year and only sixteen involved a woman killing a man with a gun in the entire country. Conversely, there were one thousand six hundred and eighty-six cases where a woman was murdered by a man with a gun. Those are only single victim, single offender incidents and they exclude mass shootings. So if anything, that's an undercount. Last but not least, my husband's family experienced a deadly accident. When someone within their family, a child accessed a firearm and killed another child while handling the gun.
One minute.
One family lost their child forever and the other family, well, that child lived, but that child never recovered. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jorgensen?
I have time to answer.
Thank you.
Next testifier, please.
My name is W. Patrick Conway, P-A-T-R-I-C-K, Conway, C-O-N-W-Y-Y. I reside at one five four five Garrett Lane, apartment one oh one, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five one two. I am, uh, stepfather of four, grandfather of three, and most importantly, husband and protector of my family. I've lived in Lincoln since June twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. Brought my family here because I was offered a job to work for the state to serve the people of this great state of Nebraska. Without planning to, my family and I have come to love Lincoln and come to love the state of Nebraska. And because I have come to love this city, I cannot sit idly by and watch things happen without being involved in some way. This past spring, in an effort to enact what someone in the city council said was nothing more than a symbolic measure, this body passed an ordinance outlawing bump stocks and other items that can raise the firing rate of semi-automatic firearms. In fact, Councilwoman Cindy Lamb was quoted by the Associated Press in an article published by U.S. News and World Report as saying the ban is, quote, "only making ourselves feel better, not addressing the real problems that leave people," and again, I quote, "feeling depressed, isolated and angry." A group of people is now asking this body to enact even more feel-good legislation that would require gun owners to keep their firearms locked up with the exception for those in their immediate possession. Nebraskaans Against Gun Violence does try to appear well-balanced by stating on their website, "We do not oppose gun ownership. In fact, many of us own guns," which sounds remarkably like the anti-Semite who says, "My best accountant is a Jew," or the white supremacist who says, "Some of my best workers are blacks." If this plan to require firearms to be stored under lock and key is pursued and ultimately passed by this body, I predict that we will see more firearm thefts go unreported. We will see more people assaulted in their homes unable to defend themselves and we will see another small but not inconsequential chip knocked out of the right of the people to keep and bear arms. We could discuss stories and numbers and I'm sure those from the anti-gun group would cite scary stories and scary numbers and the pro-freedom people will cite their stories and numbers, but would that serve to prove anything other than the old adage that figures lie and liars figure? All those stories and statistics tell us is that people who do the research will work hard to find information that supports their argument. I could cite our right to keep and bear arms as protected by the United States Constitution, but I know that many on the other side of the issue get bent out of shape when confused by how phrases were used when the Second Amendment was written. So I will instead quote the highest law in this state, the Constitution of the State of Nebraska. I have it right here if you want to follow along. "All persons are by nature free and independent and have certain inherent and inalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness and the right to keep and bear arms for security or defense of self, family, home and others and for lawful common defense, hunting, recreational use and all other lawful purposes and such rights shall not be denied or infringed by the state or any subdivision thereof." Inherent and inalienable means they did not come from government, they cannot be taken by the government. The right to keep and bear arms for the security or defense of self, family, home and others means that I am allowed, under that right, to carry and/or have unfettered access to a firearm in order to protect myself, my family, our home and anyone else I choose to protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway.
I do. You want to go shooting this weekend? Give me a call.
All right.
Mr. Rebaunck and Burton.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, God, you have patience. I commend you to listen to all of what you heard, but I also commend the people who got off of their fannies and came down here to talk. Now, let me tell you, folks, this has got to be an important issue to me because I'm missing Dancing With The Stars. But let me tell you a little bit about, about this situation. I've taken some notes and I've listened to the people and they're very concerned, as am I and as each one of you. There's nothing that we want more than to have our community safe. But there also has to be some checks and balances in this thing. We've seen in our lifetime, of course, John's lifetime's a lot older than mine, uh, longer than mine, but we've seen the development of a, well, no, you're just a young man.
Keep going.
We've seen the development of a culture of crime and a culture of, of abuse of this thing. And, and the kids don't learn that when, in those games, when somebody gets killed, they come back for the next game. They don't, they don't realize that death is very final. A lot, a lot of this starts in the home. I was growing, incidentally, uh, two times, Mr. Cresciston, I know that you saluted the flag that way, so do I. I spent thirty-one years of my life wearing the uniform of our country, full-time and part-time, and two times I raised my hand and swore to defend the Constitution of the United States. The Second Amendment is part of that document. Until it is rescinded, I have a lifelong obligation to protect it. Now, let me say this and then I'll say a bunch of other, other little things. I don't think this is the forum to address this issue. And the reason I don't think that is because any section of the legislature can change what you do. The real forum is for all these people to show up in the Capitol Building and see me next year and, uh, and we'll work on this thing and get some responsible, sensible legislation on the books. Sensible legislation that will pass a constitutional muster, not something that was just feel-good. And, and, and I like, I like this too. Lou Weaver taking down a great big tree. He bites little bites at a time. The key is to keep biting the tree. And if these people will keep biting the tree, we'll get something done. But if they give up, then who knows? Let me tell you an interesting fact of life. Not too long ago, twenty-two hundred-
One minute.
-high school kids qualified for state trap shooting at Donovan. There was at least ten, at least ten for ever one of those that tried out to qualify. Something's haywire when some of the bad people get the guns and some of the good people know how to use them and have guns. So, the problem's old and, and, and that beautiful little boy that was in here, it, none of us want a kid like that to have, have a problem and die. But we need to address the problem responsibly and we need to address it in the proper forum. And maybe, uh, Ms. Rebo, maybe the proper forum is in Disneyland East, that's Washington, I think I've probably said about enough, but, um, I do want you to know this. I'm very concerned about the problem. I own guns. I have a carry permit. And one thing that a lot of people don't know when they were talking about assault rifles, I'll be real quick.
Real quick.
Just real quick. A Benelli shotgun costs a lot of money, but it'll hold five rounds. Each one of those rounds contain thirty-two, or fifteen thirty-two caliber balls.
That, that's not really quick.
So you can, like this, as fast as you can pull the trigger five times, you can-
I need you to stop now.
That amount, I'm, I'm done.
Yes, thank you.
Now, now you can take a, a bio break.
Next testifier, please.
Uh, thank you, council, for having us. Um, I think I'm gonna bring out the cognitive dissonance of the audience here in a moment and, uh, that's important to understand because when you go through and define what fascism is, that's forcible suppression of their opposition. Uh, we need to find the narrative. It's a way of presenting an understanding of a situation or a series of events that reflects and promotes a particular point of view or set of values. Um, if we define projection, that's the attribution of one's own ideas, feelings or attitudes to other people or to objects, especially the externalization of blame, guilt or responsibility as a defense against anxiety. Uh, a lot of the people in this room have experienced a friend or family member that has been a victim of gun violence, which means that they were uneducated about the proper use of weapons. Uh, we need to find psychological projection. It's a theory in psychology in which the human ego defends itself against unconscious impulses or qualities, both positive and negative, by denying their existence in themselves while attributing it to others. So I don't know that these individuals are the right ones to take policy, uh, questions from or even really policy concerns from. They're, they're not trained and they're not educated. I think that Lincoln Public Schools should probably offer a one-hour-a-day, um, handgun course, honestly. I think that we have a constitutional right in this country to own and bear arms and we're not doing enough to actually teach children how to fire them and to use them properly. And I think that's a disservice by our, uh, you know, by the actual public education system. And so, you know, if you guys have any questions, but otherwise.
I, I do. I have one question. Would you share with us your name?
Jonathan Herms.
Herms?
Herms.
Herms. Thank you, Jonathan. Mr. Christiansen?
Jonathan.
Thank you.
Are you a firearm arms owner?
I prefer not to say.
You.
Thank you, Mr. Herms. Next testifier, please.
Yes, uh, good evening. My name is Chelsea Lemberg, spelled L-E-M-B-U-R-G. I've written my address here for your use. I'm here to speak in support of the proposed ordinance to secure firearms when not in the direct control of their legal owner. I believe this language is of special import. Certain organizations have made it a priority to try and disfigure the intent of this ordinance by claiming that safe storage would impair the ability of a gun owner to obtain their firearm when they need it. There's no evidence to suggest that that outcome is logistically probable and we've even heard a little bit about how a gun can be quickly accessed when needed. Now, as far as the argument goes about what liberties we have in our own homes, I'd like to point out that we have to register our house cats when we, when they never leave the home. We have to show proof of vaccination and pay money because some pet owners are not responsible and we have to have animal control. We must make these sacrifices and shoulder the burden for the sake of public health. Has any reasonable person ever objected to these regulations? No, I, but I thought that would be a helpful parallel on the issue of personal liberty. Also, as a point of clarity, the NRA's Eddie Eagle program, which is their educational program for kids, is ineffective. It's been proven to be ineffective. Children are impulsive and even older kids and teens don't understand death. Uh, they don't understand the finality of it. Um, they memorize, younger kids even memorize the song and dance aspects of Eddie Eagle, but not the content. And I'd just like to point that out, uh, that no amount of education can, um, impair the curiosity of kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemberg.
Are you a gun owner?
I'm not a gun owner and I never will be.
Thank you.
Next testifier, please.
All right. Good evening, council members. I am Colton Zammerslaw, twenty forty-five D Street here in Lincoln. Uh, I'm here to testify in opposition of the proposed ordinance. I don't feel like it's a city issue. It should be held at a higher level. Furthermore, it, uh, it does inhibit our constitutional rights. We have a right to bear arms. It's been said multiple times. Uh, further though, um, to make the legislation have teeth, you know, be really able to enforce this, um, would we have to have inspections on the homes? How, how would it be enforced? Would it only be after something bad happens that somebody would get a fine? That's not really, not really accomplishing what these people want. They want something to stop it now before it happens. And, um, may I remind you of our rights against search and seizure. Um, I am a concealed carry permit holder. Yes, I own a firearm. Um, I gave up a lot of rights of privacy in getting that permit. Um, you have to have, you have to be fingerprinted. There's a training course you have to go through and fees to pay. The problem with this proposed legislation is that it's not going to stop the people that are going to carry out these things. Law-abiding citizens typically abide the law. I think that's pretty obvious. Okay. Um, so a hot topic here is gun violence in our, by our youth in our schools. Uh, research has been done, statistics have been, have been kept and I can tell you with good certainty that the next school shooter will be between sixteen and twenty-one years old, will be a male, more than likely, and they'll recently gone through a traumatic event. These have all been statistically found to be true. We know who these people are. Maybe we need to do a better job of finding them and helping them with their mental health So, while I support safe gun handling, um, locking your guns, having, having a gun safe, I, I don't believe I should have to have a big brother tell me to do so. It should be a common sense thing. Lock up your gun if you have kids at home. If you don't have kids at home, keep them in a safe place. I, I, I don't think we need a big brother telling us what to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Carmen Smith, C-A-R-M-E-N-S-M-I-T-H. Um, I have my address written down here for your purposes. I'd rather not, not state. I also didn't prepare a written statement, so I'm hoping to keep my testimony rather short, but, um, also hoping to remember everything that I wanted to say. Um, I'm here in support of, uh, you hopefully considering, of introducing an ordinance for the safe storage of weapons. I currently have two, um, high school students in the LPS system. I have a couple little ones that, um, are gonna be entering LPS as well. I guess my biggest impression particularly tonight here is I'm really wondering why this is a controversial i- issue. This is common sense. We're not asking to restrict gun ownership. We're not asking to restrict even gun access, which is asking for everybody to store their weapons in a manner so that there's no unauthorized access possible, particularly by children or other people. So I'm, I don't want to accuse anybody of, of anything, but I'm really wondering, um, if somebody claims to be a law-abiding responsible gun owner argues against such an ordinance, which should be common sense, um, then are they not already doing that? Because that is the only reason that I can think of why you would argue against such a thing. We're not even talking at this moment, uh, at least as far as I'm aware of any specific sort of measures, as in you have to have a gun safe or you have to have a trigger lock or any of that sort. We're, we're literally just asking, keep your guns out of the hands of people that shouldn't have them. So, um, I do, I do not own guns. I have a toddler and I don't think, um, it would be fair to put that responsibility on my two and a half-year-old, like the first testifier was saying, to keep himself from- like the first testifier was saying, to keep himself from shooting himself in the face. Thank you, any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Mark Freyoff, uh, my address is, uh, on the piece of paper here. I do own a gun, just recently bought one, um, I also have one issued to me by the National Guard. I guess I'll reverse my testimony a little bit, I'm just kinda wondering how this ordinance would look and what, what good it would do. I, I, enforcement is something that I'm just really clueless about. Do you go into the house and ensure that a gun's locked? How do you do that without violating search and seizure? It, it just doesn't make sense to me. I, I, I was told that, uh, an obvious way is just to make this a secondary offense, um, but as a previous testifier said, um, that only just, you know, adds an additional, uh, penalty if something bad previously happened. So I, I just, everybody seems that testified in favor of this, I'm not exactly sure what it even looks like, um, without doing illegal search and seizure. And so for that reason, however good intentioned it is, it just seems like it's probably bad policy. And I, I fear that the true intent here is just to push the ball a little bit further for anti-gun people and to set the stage locally and legally so that lawful gun owners will just further have their rights impeded, um, down the line, you know? Just push the ball two more yards here with this, with this ordinance. So, you know, a lot of the testimony has been revolving around fear in anecdotal situations uh, that are cited, and, and tho- you know, those are important, but fear is not a good way to decide correct policy. Ironically, a lot of the testifiers are actually, uh, members of a group that goes out and, and does, uh, violence and vandalism, and, uh, and they have a very immoral attitude about getting what they want. And so I think a good message to send them tonight is to sort of not buy into it. You know, they're, they're, they're sitting here claiming they're the ones that are afraid for their lives, and then meanwhile they go out and do everything that you know they do. So I, I just, I, I find it disingenuous, I find all these people that got up here to be very disingenuous. Um, they're not really concerned about gun safety. They're not, they haven't really cited any reason in Lincoln why this needs to happen. What has happened in Lincoln in the last couple of years that has, has brought this necessity about? Uh, you hear examples from other states, but why? Why this, why now? Uh, and the only thing I can come up with is, well, it's almost the election, we gotta get our base together somehow. And so, I mean, this just seems like pure politics, it's unenforceable, just completely bad policy to even be looking at. I mean, I, I applaud their, their political savviness in this, though, but, um, you guys just should not bite on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this evening. Uh, my name is James Harold, Harold is H-E-R-R-O-L-D. I live at twelve hundred Hawkfly Road here in Lincoln. Um, when I first heard about this proposal, or a proposal, to introduce an ordinance in Lincoln to require gun owners to store firearms in a specific way, I thought, you know, this probably isn't going to be a proposal that has any merit, but rather than cast too much judgment before the fact, uh, my usual instinct is to wait. Uh, wait until a proposal has actually been made, wait until there's language you can actually read, and wait until you know exactly what you're going to be making a decision on before you make that decision. And then, in this instance, though, I do think it's important to get out ahead of these types of proposals. And because we don't have specific language, only a general idea, I would like to speak generally about new regulations. Too often, proposals made under the guise of public safety have little to no evidence to back up the claim. Regardless, new laws passed in the name of safety require a reduction in individual liberty, and trading rights and liberties for the illusion of safety is foolish and dangerous. Furthermore, almost every time a government adds a new layer of regulation, that regulation has unintended negative consequences. In case you're not aware, Chief Blymeister has already stated publicly that an ordinance to restrict gun owner's storage habits further, like the ones that some folks are advocating for, would be something that he doesn't support. The chief doesn't wanna be in the business of enforcing an ordinance like what's being requested, and that's with good reason. He already understands there will be unintended negative consequences. For five weeks or so, business owners and managers from establishments in the rail yard came before you to ask to extend their liquor licenses for just a few hours on one day so they could serve more people during the course of Husker football festivities. And thankfully, they did get that license, but much of the opposition they received was due to concerns for public safety, and on that particular matter of public safety, members of this body used the chief con- the chief's comments to bolster their opposition of that license. I bring this up because I wanna implore the council members to be consistent, and I'd ask that the council members who have deferred to the chief's judgment in other areas also do so here with the gun storage issue. Another general idea regarding firearm regulation that I'd like to address hearkens back to last spring when we had a conversation on a bump stock ban and then that ordinance was passed.
One minute.
A few members of the council voted for that ordinance, but also claimed that the ordinance was largely symbolic. That ordinance carried with it a possibility of up to a five-hundred-dollar fine and up to six months in jail. That is not symbolic. When you can charge somebody a five-hundred-dollar fine or put them in jail for six months, that's real consequences. The ordinances that this body passes have consequences, it's not just symbolic. So I would ask this council to not even entertain the idea of further restricting what people can own and how they have to store their owned property once it is owned. And I ask if a proposal like that does come before you to reject it prima facie, not trade individual liberty for supposed safety, and not justify a vote based on symbolism. So again, um, it's not usual for me to pass judgment on an ordinance that hasn't even been drafted, but in this case, I do think it's important to take a preemptive stance against it. Thank you. I am a firearms owner.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. Next testifier, please.
My name is Julie Nichols, J-U-L-I-E-N-I-C-H-O-L-S. I need the address.
Please.
Nineteen ninety-five Park Avenue, six-eight-five-oh-two.
Thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I can't help but observe that there is a, an assumption being made that an ordinance is written, and there have been all sorts of arguments that have been made, uh, kind of out of the air, of why, how the language of it is. I mean, I am here, uh, simply because of, you know, I guess there was a mockery of statistics earlier, um, but these things are factual. I have a son in high school, um, his opinion of how he goes to school is different now. Um, my first funeral was a kid who got his head blown off in a hunting accident. And I emphasize accident. I am a gun owner, I'll address your question right now. I own a Smith &amp; Wesson, uh, antique twenty-two revolver that is in good working order. What stuns me about, um, being accused of, uh, an organization politicizing something when the opposition, I guess, I thought we were all kind of on the same page here, is that we don't want dead kids, we don't want people, uh, misusing firearms. I think that there's plenty of fact to back that up. I wish I could offer some statistics to you, and the statistics I would offer is how often does a home invasion occur? How many home invasions have we had in Lincoln that has resulted in the use of a firearm to protect one's home? Why are we so afraid? And what is it that we are so afraid of in our homes? I would ask everyone to ask themselves that question, um, and also to reflect upon the facts that have been put forth by reasonable organizations that take this seriously, and I am sure that the police department is one group of people who takes this very seriously. I don't see any inhibition of rights here. Um, I personally think that if you choose to own a firearm and use a firearm, you should do it safely. I am standing here right now because when my twelve-year-old brother-
One minute.
-put a gun up to my chest and pulled the trigger, it wasn't a twenty-two rifle, it was a BB gun, because my parents kept their guns in a locked cabinet. Thank you very much, all of you, for your patience tonight in listening to all sides of this question, and I look forward to seeing what you might come up with as you discuss the possibility of creating an ordinance.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hi, I'm Donna Roller, I live at two thousand Twin Ridge Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. And I'm really kinda confused with the accusation that it's important to know whether I have a gun or not, it's, and I'm confused about the intense need to protect their right to own a gun. Nobody is arguing against the Constitution here. And I'm sitting in the audience, and someone's testifies that thinks there's a terrorist in their room? What are, I would like to ask, what are we afraid of? I think this is about kids and, and prevention. And there's only so much we can do as a city and as a people. We have a breakdown in our culture. Who is instigating this culture of guns? I have a neighbor that shoots a gun out of his window, and nothing can be done because I have to catch him in the act, even though three neighbors have seen it. I have a man that abused his, beat up his wife across the street. I live in a good neighborhood, a car was just broken in, crossed, parked in front of my house. And I question, if I have a gun, would I give my life or would I actually kill somebody? Is anybody thinking about what that gun means? And we're trying to protect children and irresponsible people. Now, people make mistakes, we're not always responsible. So what's the big deal about locking up a gun? And I think this proposal for an ordinance is a point of, a starting point to start the discussion. If we did an ordinance, what should it look like? Who should be involved in that discussion? And it's a starting point, there's no ordinance on the books, so, you know, all of these things that are maybe against it, maybe, maybe it's a good point, maybe it's a not, but, you know, I'm beginning to think I'm not safe in this town. And I am, right now, here and now, today, I'm afraid about some of the people that gave testimony against this ordinance. And I don't know how to protect myself because I will not own a gun. I come from a long line of people who were persecuted, who ran, who stood on the right side of human dignity. And I have grandchildren, and I'm afraid to go, they're going to a public school to do this gun lockdown procedure, are we crazy? We, we are living in an insane society here. So I hope that this council has a discussion and we start talking about this. I shouldn't have to live next door to a guy owning a gun that shoots it out of a window, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hello, uh, thank you for hearing me tonight, uh, my name is Ron Watermeyer. I kinda declined to give my, uh, address because I live within two blocks of the last murder victim in Lincoln, Nebraska. I live in the north side of town. I butt up against a trailer court, my property butts up against a trailer court that's full of the gangs. Um, I'm right next to subsidized housing where a young man recently, well, a couple of years ago, was shot off the balcony. I drive past Fourteenth and Adams every day where, uh, a, a quick shop employee was murdered in the middle of the night. Do I own a gun? You bet, okay? Do I own lots of guns? You bet. Are they locked up? Yes, except for the ones that I carry, okay? I, too, have a question on, on the implementation of any kind of an ordinance that you would, uh, would come up with tonight. Number one, I think it's probably unconstitutional, straight out. Number two, uh, what are you gonna do? Arrest, uh, um, the person that, like, these people in a tragedy?
Please, please, stop.
Yeah, if, if you're gonna, you know, what are you gonna do? What kind of a penalty are you gonna have on top of, you know, somebody who just went through some kind of a tragedy that, that, you know, unimaginable, terrible? Uh, you know, I, I feel terrible for these people. At the same time, I refuse to be a victim, so, um, yes, I, I do carry, and, uh, I'm just concerned with what you people are gonna, you know, come up with. I understand these people are all afraid, you know, uh, and I understand they want something done, but, um, you know, if, if you really wanna get something done and do something correct and intelligent, uh, you need to talk with the NRA, they have programs from top to bottom. School safety, Eddie Eagle, and yes, years ago, we had a tragedy in, in my son's school, they're grown up now, and I volunteered to teach Eddie Eagle at the school where my son was at. The, uh, principal backed up and looked at me like I had suddenly contracted leprosy, you know? So if you're not gonna educate them and you're just gonna punish the unpunishable, you know, we're, we're, you're doing no good whatsoever. So, that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier.
Good evening, uh, Chelsea Pounds, C-H-E-L-S-E-Y-P-O-U-N-D-S. I reside at six forty-three South Eleventh Street, apartment two. Uh, I wanted to address a couple of the concerns that I've heard tonight about it being controversial and not understanding why this is a controversial topic. Um, I, I too am in support of, uh, having, you know, reasonable responsibility in households. Um, however, there's also a responsibility to protect your household. Um, I am a gun owner, um, and I do support, um, having the authority to decide if I would like to have a gun beside me when I sleep at night. Um, and, and I think having that opportunity is something that even last week we saw in the news after this proposal came about, the day after we heard that someone had intruders, intruders, excuse me, in the middle of the night, and he was able to ward them off just with his laser sight. Um, and, and that's something I think that is underestimated, is the authority to actually control situations. We, we don't usually see shootings in defense, and that's why this is, the statistic is so low. It's because we do see, um, a lot of people who are just using that gun as their point of authority to make that defense, and people run away from guns. Um, I have a lot of family in Texas, and I have, uh, been aware for years of the, the CAP law, it's a child access prevention law. Um, it was instated in nineteen ninety-five, um, and, and one of my concerns uh, with this type of legislation that may, um, occur in the state or city level here is that it, it is reactive, it is not proactive, which I think is the, um, hope and intention of such a regulation. And because of that, um, I, I, I resort to knowing that Texas has only had a handful of convictions on this type of reactive law, because a lot of prosecutors don't wanna prosecute a father who just lost his child out of his own, um, you know, unfortunate accident. who just lost his child out of his own, you know, unfortunate accident. And, and it is a fact that prosecutors don't often prosecute that type of situation because they are already in a grieving manner. And so it is hard to make this type of rule to, to further punish a person who's already been punished for the rest of his life. Was he wrong? Absolutely, yes. Was he, you know, supposed to be doing things differently? Absolutely, yes. When we get our guns, when we can get our concealed, when we get our concealed carry permits, we learn in eight-hour courses that we need to act like the gun is loaded at all times, keep it away from kids. We need to make sure that it is not loaded when we are not using it. And, and in the case of driving around with it, we lock it up in our cars when we are traveling. And unfortunately, there are a lot of people that abuse this. And because of that, there is a need to do something about it and I'm completely for this. But it concerns me.
One minute.
Thank you. It concerns me that the, the research that has been done in the past has only been through organizations who are researching to find out the cause of death, such as the CDC. Only in two thousand twelve, when Obama had the executive order to deepen research in this after Sandy Hook and Newton, did we start looking at defensive cases and how we can prevent different situations from happening with gun ownership. And you don't have to go and own a gun if you don't want to. But there's a lot of research out there that has not been done or that has only been done recently that we should look further to if we're going to consider something like this. Because it is a concern to those of us who have actually had to use guns as a defensive manner in our households. And I do believe that that is our right to do. And I do believe that people should be accountable and are accountable personally for situations and tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier.
My name's James Vaughn, and I'd rather not give my address, I wrote it down here. I thought from the very beginning, giving our address is a neat way to segregate the people you could steal guns from or the people you could rob.
It's not our intent, but thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
And if I seem a little dull-witted and scattered, it's because I just drove twelve and a half hours to get here to testify. I've lived here my whole life, I'm approaching seventy. In fact, I remember when town signs said about seventy thousand people.
James, how do you spell your last name?
V A U G H N.
Thank you.
And so anyway, just, I have a bunch of scribbled bullet points, I hope I can read them because I have very little sleep, but first of all, it's illegal to have a, a list of names with addresses, you probably know that. But I'm opposed to this legislation. I'm not opposed to, to safekeeping of guns. I keep most of mine in a safe, I've had guns my whole life. My kids have grown up around them. They knew that they didn't touch them, it was because they were educated well. Most of my, I have three daughters and they were taught from age five to shoot and stay away from my guns. This is a nonsensical bill, it's a feel-good bill, there's, I see no way to enforce it unless you want to get, like somebody earlier stated, come into their house and, and do checks. And how would you define it? I don't know. Do you have one minute, once you get there, to put your gun in the safe? Two minutes, an hour? Or somebody like me, when I go deer hunting, I'll come home sometimes during the day, set it against the wall. Do I have to go downstairs and unlock the safe, put it in the safe? Rest for fifty minutes and then get back up and go back out? There's, we already have a bunch of laws that are just unenforceable. One of them I've sent to Cindy Lamb, it was about, it's illegal in Lincoln to have gunpowder on the street. Okay, so, or the police do. Not carry guns, I mean, that doesn't make any sense, but I'm kind of rambling, like I said, I'm tired and, and I apologize for that. What, what about the people that can't afford a safe? There's always gonna be people that can't afford a safe. I heard earlier that they said that, or somebody said that if you can afford a gun, you can afford a safe. This young lady back there says she can't even afford a gun. She'd like to have one and if she talks to me later, I can see about helping her. But is the city council then prepared to subsidize safes? If you're gonna require people to have them, then you're gonna have to figure out what you're gonna do about that. One of the other things was all the misinformation. There's been a ton of statistics, a lot of the statistics that were quoted earlier is from anti-gun groups. I found it interesting that a lady from Planned Parenthood would be up here
One minute.
Against gun violence with kids, but they promote killing embryos. And as far as home invasions, I've noticed a big influx, at least according to the TV, of home invasions. There was a young lady that was murdered here not too long ago. I myself, just three weeks ago, had two guys kicking my front door, masked, armed with a shotgun. Luckily, I wasn't there, I have them on camera. If I'd been there, then what would I do? Do I run into the other room and quick try to get into my safe, whatever it is? You wouldn't have had time. So I'd have to try and defend myself otherwise, but it just doesn't make sense. The only thing that's gonna prevent somebody from getting your gun in your home would be a twelve hundred dollar gun safe, like the young man said earlier. Anything else, you can get by really easy. Basically, that's it. Hope I wasn't too scattered for you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Next testifier, please.
Hello, my name's Jared Wiemer, W I M E R, and my address is four thirty-six South Twenty-Ninth Street. I do not own a gun. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, I oppose establishing an ordinance to require firearms to be locked away when not in use. I support the idea of locking away your weapons when they are not in use, but an ordinance is not the right way to do this. There are many reasons why this is a terrible policy and a bad idea, but with limited time available and everybody wants to go home, there are too many issues I'd like to focus on. Endangering lives and the current codes in Lincoln. First, this rule endangered the lives of people who need a firearm. We're talking about locking up our hunting rifles, that's showing what we're not, we're not talking about that to defend ourselves. We're talking about a home invasion that does seem to be on the influx and also we do not necessarily need to shoot anybody to deter violence against us in that manner. But when I was looking into this, I, without much effort at all, I was able to go through and find seven stories where people in their own homes use a firearm to protect themselves from an intruder. These just go back to July of this year. So in five of the cases, the person defending themselves was a woman. In three cases, the intruder was an ex-boyfriend. And in two of those cases, there was an existing protection in order. So whether it's simply a woman who lives alone or a woman who has been threatened with acts of violence, even a short delay in accessing a fire alarm could be fatal. Handgun defense courses will teach you that you have roughly ten seconds to stop an intruder with a gun. Without knowing what the ordinance is gonna look like at this point, we've heard guns locked away, separate from ammo, guns just locked away in a vault, in a box. We don't know what it is, it's hard to argue against that, but ten seconds is not a whole lot of time from when you hear a boot on your door. Just one week ago, as we were learning about this proposed ordinance, a Lincoln resident awoke to voices inside his home. He had a handgun available and is able to order them to leave. Once again, he didn't have to shoot anybody, just threat of violence was enough to deter them. So a desire to punish someone with a fine for not locking their gun in the way we want them to does not justify endangering the lives of others. Second, in April of two thousand three, the Lincoln Municipal Code was amended to prohibit keeping a firearm in an unattended motor vehicle for a period in excess of twenty-four hours. Despite this rule, guns still continue to be stolen from cars in Lincoln. While I've had this rule for over fifteen years, it is not preventing guns from being stolen and is not enforceable. As any lawmaker or parent knows, a rule you can't enforce only weakens all the rules. This proposed ordinance will be just as ineffective and undermine necessary laws. So while you can never pass enough laws to guarantee perfect safety, I encourage the council not to enact law which will make us less safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wiemer. Next testifier.
Hi, my name is Janelle Corr, and I don't really have anything planned, but I wanted to speak. I grew up on a farm outside of Melbida in western Nebraska. All my uncles and cousins are hunters, I grew up around guns, and that's why I know responsible gun owners lock up their guns. And I just cannot fathom for the life of me why anyone would complain about taking five seconds to lock up a gun when it could save your child's life, it could save the lives of high school students, middle school students. I am sick and tired of women and children paying the price for men's refusal to take responsibility. As you noticed, almost everyone who is opposed to this is a man. So what are these men so afraid of? I don't understand, I don't know what the big deal is. Why would a so-called responsible gun owner not want to lock up his gun so his child does not shoot himself in the face? It's simple, I don't understand who could possibly be against this. It's baffling to me, absolutely baffling. And I'm, I'm tired of it. Tired of adults saying they can't do anything about it. You can do something about it. This is not something that should be put on kids. A two-year-old child should not be held responsible because his parents couldn't be bothered to lock up a gun. No toddler is responsible, no, no matter how much education you give a toddler, it doesn't matter, they're, they're a toddler, they do insanely stupid things every day. I still do insanely stupid things every day. You just have to take responsibility, adults have to start taking responsibility. You can't keep pushing this off on the kids. You cannot. I don't own a gun.
Janelle, how do you spell your last name?
C O R R.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
My name is Ruth Ann Thompson. I live outside the city limits, but I am within the three-mile limit. And I just want to tell a little short story that happened a couple of years ago in my home. My nephew lives a mile away in the country. He came home from work one night, there were lights on in the house. He went to the door, an intruder came out of his dining room with his clothes on and started to talk to him. He backed out the door, called the county sheriff, and came to our home. For the next two hours, twenty-five law enforcement officers spent time trying to find the guns in that home and get that intruder out. That man had left the regional center earlier that day and walked from the regional center to the northeast corner of this county, entered a locked home. The guns were not secured. It took twenty-five law enforcement, state patrol, county sheriffs, and Lincoln police to get that home emptied. My, we were up for two hours till they did that. They called us eighteen times to find out what room is he in, where are the guns at? What, where is the weapon, where is the ammunition? My nephew, the next day, went and bought gun safes and he locks and secures his guns today. But this example of a person from the regional center being excused, he had done this home invasion five times before. He was still released unsupervised from the regional center and entered a secured home. Even if my nephew had had a gun on him, he did not. He didn't know if the guy had a gun, would come after him, what would happen. This is a situation that took how many law enforcement hours to deal with because a gun, the guns were not secured. I don't get to go vote for any of you, I am outside the city limits, but yet you control my living situation. And I certainly wish you would at least consider adopting a safe storage ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you a gun owner?
I am, and it is secure.
Would anyone else like to take advantage of the public comment portion of the program? This was a public comment portion? Oh, we do.
My name's Pat Scherz, and I'm gonna say one thing. I'm very well prepared. I feel fairly safe in my neighborhood if people would pay attention to what they're doing and they're alert. Yes, I don't own the firearm, but I also think that watching kids today watch too much violent stuff and parents let them watch whatever they want. I don't care that much for violence, but the families have the right to decide what they want to do and how. So there's not much more I can say.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else like to speak on, during the public comment portion of the program? I'm going to reiterate what Councilman Camp said earlier, there is no legislation in front of us, no resolutions, no ordinances. The people who spoke today spoke on issues that they thought were public comment and brought before the city council as a portion of our public comment, not a public hearing. I think we're done, no, no questions, no, this was just, Councilman Camp, you usually help me at this part with the last?
Well, Mr. Chair, I would move for adjournment.
Second.
Have a motion for adjourned by Councilman Camp, second by Councilman Christensen. Would you call the roll, please?
Ray Bold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb? Motion carried, seven zero.